The special work session of the Annapolis City Council for Thursday, July 19th, 2018, will be called to order at 3:07. At this time, with everyone willing and able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. City Attorney, please present the first item on the agenda.
The first item on the agenda is business and miscellaneous, beginning with ID-223-18, Truxton Park Pool.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Teresa Sutherland. I have Jen Jennings, Archie Trader, Betsy, I don't know your last name, I'm sorry.
McKeown.
And Jim.
Emmer.
Emmer. Jim was the consultant that had previously been retained to consult with DPW on pool options. So, I wanted to start out, I just want to go over a little bit of a timeline, and then I'll go over the documents that we've handed out to you, and documents that we didn't rehand out that had previously been provided to the council. So, back in December of 2016, was when you had the sale of the Eisenhower Golf Course ordinance, and in that ordinance, it said that the proceeds from the sale of Eisenhower shall be restricted to capital expenses for replacing the existing Truxton Park Pool with a pool which will create a recreational amenity in the city that will generate revenue. Any remaining proceeds of the sale shall be restricted to capital expenses for new or existing recreational facilities in the city. 8:30, 17, funds received from the city, from the county, that's when we got the Eisenhower money. In September of 17, an RFQ was developed that was circulated to the city council on October 1st. On October 9th, DPW staff and Alderwoman Finn Lason met with SEI. October 19th, there was a council work session where the pool was discussed, and that various options. March 20th, there was a pool tour. April 4th, the finance committee discussed the pool, and on June 6th, the finance committee again discussed the pool, along with potential construction costs. Between that October 19th, 17 date, and the 3/2018 date, is when Jim Beecham was managing or dealing with the project, so we are not certain if there was any formal interaction Jim Beecham had with the council on the pool during that time, and so we would welcome your input on that. We've handed out a number of documents to you. Ms. Finn Lason had asked for revenues and expenses for the existing pool, and we've put that together for the last three years. At the top, it just says Truxton Municipal Pool, revenues and expenses. That is followed by the cost recovery, so for Truxton, we recovered 99% of our costs in 2015, which went down to 78% in 2016, which went down to 59% in 2017. Revenue was down in 2017 under programs, it's primarily related to lower swim team registrations, and then just daily attendance was down, so revenue decreased in 17. Costs went up in 17, mainly under the salary line column, you'll see that the costs went up. We increased the pay rates, particularly for returning employees who came back, you know, to work another season. We had more, more what? We had more pool operators, and we were open longer because school didn't start till after Labor Day, so the pool was open for two weeks full-time, when normally it would have been closed at that point. So, our cost recovery is down over the two-year period. We handed out as well, you can see the cost recovery, the second document is from the county. So, the pool on Reva Road is recouping about 67%, of its, 67, 68% of its operating costs, and those are just direct operating costs. It does not include any debt service, and it doesn't include any overhead for management, like Recreation and Parks Management, it's direct pool costs. So that, and then the North Arundel Aquatic Center is more successful in recovering its costs, it's recovering about 88, 89% of its operating costs. We have an email from the city of Round Rock, Texas. So, we reached out, Archie reached out to get whatever he could get, you know, through his professional network from other pools, other operators of pools. So, in the city of Round Rock, did they give us an answer? What's this down here?
It's the second page.
Okay. We, okay, I'm sorry. So, down at the bottom of that page, you have Prescott Valley, Arizona. So, in 1617, they had a budget of 228,000 expenses with revenue of 102, so they were recouping about 45%. Palm Beach County, Florida operates two seasonal pools and three year-round pools, and the seasonal pools recover 10 to 14% of their costs, year-round is recovering 34 to 46%. Port Townsend, Washington, you can see 47% gross revenue to direct expenses, and 35%. And, let's see, Greenbelt is recovering about a third of their annual operating costs. And then you have a rather lengthy article that Mr. Trader provided to Ms. Finn Lason that just talks about the various operating aquatics in the black, how can you recover your costs? So, those are the documents we were able to find on the operating side that we wanted to provide to you, and I think Brian Snyder handed out one more that's from somewhere and it's highlighted in yellow, Stafford County, Virginia. So, that just gives you a feel. Now, obviously, how much revenue, how much of your expenses you recover from your revenue is going to depend on a multitude of factors. We know if we were able to locate a pool indoor or outdoor that was adjacent to the Pitt Moyer Center, we're more likely to get better revenue, expense recovery from our revenues than a standalone pool, that that's the only attraction at that particular site. So, all of these are going to vary. We also did some research on the cost to build indoor pools, which of course depends on where it is. It's all site development costs, it depends what kind of pool you build. The county built the North Arundel Swim Center, which is a much fancier pool than the one on Reva Road, it's got slides and spray parks and fun things like that, but it is a huge brick and glass building. It's not a pool with a bubble enclosure. So, how much it costs to build it depends on what amenities you pick and where you build it. It's going to cost us more to build anything, indoor or outdoor pool, at Pitt Moyer, because you can't accommodate it within the existing facility, and if you put it on the existing Pitt Moyer site, you're displacing ball fields, or basketball courts, or things that were constructed with open space money, so the state will require you to reconstruct those someplace else, so that's part of your cost. If you try to build it by buying Salvation Army property, that's going to add to your costs. So, those are all factors to consider. My concern as a city manager is, one, if we don't design a pool this summer, start the design process, we are unlikely to be able to open a pool in the summer of 2020. Now, we can design that pool process however you all tell me to do it, but I've got a budget for 3.1 million, so I believe, in my opinion, an indoor pool is going to cost more than an outdoor pool, and I have cost estimates developed by our Director of Public Works that tells me that 3.1 million is going to get us an outdoor pool. So, if we're going to do an indoor pool, we're going to have to sell bonds to pay for it, depending how much it is, and I'm just throwing this number out there, the debt service on $3 million is $200,000 a year, roughly. So, we can take whatever number that is and factor it, if it were 5 million, or it were 8 million, whatever it is, we can get a rough estimate of that number. And it obviously costs more to operate an indoor pool, because you have year-round costs to operate. To my knowledge, there has been no feasibility study done of the demand for an indoor pool, what kind of revenues we could expect, what kind of market there is for the users. We've got a pool five miles away on Reva Road, would we be just, would we be taking those users, would be different users using our pool? How much, what market is there in this area to support an indoor pool? As far as I know, city has not done any kind of feasibility study in that regard. Also, what kind of rate structure would the market support, which is going to factor into everything. So, that's kind of where we are on the operating side. On the capital side, we had presented to the finance committee back in May, or whatever date that was, different options they had asked for, what's the cost to do an outdoor pool at the existing site, what's the cost to do an outdoor pool with a bubble at the existing site, what's the cost to do an outdoor pool with a bubble, with a new bathhouse at the existing site, what's the cost to do an indoor pool with a bubble at Pitt Moyer, and we went through a number of iterations that was provided to you all back in May or June, and so you already have those documents, we'd be happy to go over them again if you'd like us to. So, other than that, we are open to your questions. And my goal, my goal is to leave here with a direction today of what I'm doing. I can leave here with a direction to go put out a bid to build an outdoor pool, I can leave here with a direction of, we want more time to explore this. I can go, I can leave here today with, we want you to go out and put a bid to design, build, and indoor pool. I want you to go do a bid to design, build, operate, and maintain an indoor pool. So, all I want is guidance of what you want done, if it's something other than what is in the budget that was just adopted, and, there's something else I was going to say? It'll come to me, just went out of my head. Oh, and I, and I need that direction to move, I need to know, need you to know, that should you delay, because we decide we want to explore it further, that we may not have a pool in 2020. Just go into it with your eyes open.
Alderwoman Attorney?
Oh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam City Manager, for the documents. It is a lot of documents, and I'm trying to sort of speed read through them, but I just want to be able to identify options, viable options, and from what you gave us here, is, is a capital project a viable option with this return on investment? I mean, is this an attractive, if you, there's Plan A and Plan B, and Plan B was to explore a year-round pool, covered pool, and it would have to involve bond funding. And my question is, is it a viable project for bond funding if I'm looking at return on investments of all over the place, but nothing really attractive for, is that, is that a fair question to, if we explore?
I don't, I don't think it's quite, I'm not going to say it's not a fair question, but we're not necessarily expecting our recreational facilities to be self-supporting. It's not an enterprise fund, right? So, we built Pitt Moyer, it doesn't recover its costs, I don't know if it ever was intended to cover its costs, but, you know, it doesn't, and when a government provides recreational facilities, it's using taxpayer money because it believes providing recreation is good for the health and welfare of its citizens. So, it's not necessarily that we would expect an indoor pool to be self-supporting, or any pool to be self-supporting, but you're going, my point is, you're going to be, if it's not self-supporting, you're using taxpayer dollars.
Yeah, and.
And that's, you can choose to do that. It's a recreational amenity.
Well, the reason I ask also is that our capital projects budget is sort of, you know, I don't want to say in flux, but yeah, sort of in flux, and these projects have to be scored, and my fear is if we, if we say we're going to go the capital projects route, then we may be looking at a lower score, and it may be delayed two or three years, it's just something to consider when we look at that option, I think.
Alderwoman Finn Lason?
Didn't have to raise my hand this time. I'm going to make an appeal that we take our time and do this right. Exactly six months to the day, October 19th, 2017, no, it was nine months to the day, nine months, we had this exact same discussion. And at that time, and I sent the video to everyone, and it's queued up if you want to watch it, and Alderman Arnett is saying no because he chaired that work session, but there were seven of us, six of us, seven of us here at that work session, when we made, I thought, and I think everyone present thought, that we made it clear that we wanted to pursue a pool in the existing location, and one that would be a year-round pool that generated revenue for the city. And it is true, it is not in my amendment, because we had had that discussion at our work session. And so, that was what those of us who were sitting here in 2017 believed was going to happen. And since then, we have continued to ask the same questions. Thank you for the data on the revenue that we are generating. I too spoke to Anarundel County, and even though they're only recovering 60 and 80%, they're about to put out a bid, an RFP, to build a third pool. So, obviously, they have a commitment to the community, they know the pool is not going to replace itself, or pay for itself, they build brick structures, that's not what we're talking about. But they're moving forward with yet another pool. We still have unanswered questions. I know that our consultant has provided us with beautiful pictures about outdoor pools, and from the very first meeting I attended, I asked for beautiful pictures of a year-round pool, and I have yet to see those pictures. I have yet to see what it would cost to replace our pool, and what it would cost to add a cover, and what it would cost to add whatever amenities we can afford. Now, I think we all know that if you reach out to someone, a contractor, and you say, I've got $3 million to do this, they're going to spend $3 million to do this, let's be real, okay? We need an itemized breakdown on what this is going to cost. Now, I have been checking around with others who build pools in our community, who do pools at the Naval Academy, who do pools right here in the city at the Yacht Club, to find out what process they used, so that they could be sure to get what they need for the money they have. And I should be very clear, my position is not that we should spend more money, absolutely not. I know what we've allocated, and I sincerely believe we can get what we want for the money we have, but we may have to do some work to get it. There's a gentleman in the audience, Mr. Larry Highland, who worked with the Yacht Club to make sure their process was in place, so that they got the pool that they want, and guess what? There were services that were offered in gratis, because they embraced our community. And I contend that we have people in our community, Mr. Highland being one, who's willing to help us with this. You know, the mayor is always talking about bringing partners in. The Medical Center, another partner, we have not reached out to, because one of the three uses that we have, were interested in, was therapeutic, and the Medical Center has a need that we need to tap into, but that has not been done yet. There are two grant opportunities that have been presented to the city for additional funds for the pool, so just in case we can't do it for the 3.1 million that we have, there are opportunities for additional revenue. Our own Recreation and Parks Board sought that for us, but that has fallen on deaf ear for some reason. We cannot be frightened into thinking that we will have no recreational facility for our kids. No one sitting here in this room wants that. Every year, and those of you who have been here will know that, they come to us from the Rexon Parks and say, the pool's going to fail this year, and we said, patch it up, and they do, and it gets us through another year. And so, I believe we can do that. I believe it's worth patching it up for another year to get it right. We may not be able to put in the six lanes like the gentleman from the Naval Academy is doing in another pool, because maybe that's not what's going to generate a lot of revenue for us. But maybe we can put in a larger therapeutic area that will generate revenue for us year-round. And maybe we can put in, maybe it's not the palm trees, and maybe it's not all the fountains and all those fun things, but maybe we can put in a few of the perks for the year-round pool. But we haven't done the work to make sure that we can get the most for our bucks. And so, I am hoping that you all will stand with me in saying, let's make sure we get it right. You know, we know that this is an amenity our community wants. Our Rexon Park Board did a survey, and the community said, those people who responded said, we want a year-round pool, and we'll use it. And I'm one of the people who uses Pitt Moyer, I haven't been there recently, I'm sorry, but, I'll be back, but, folks are saying they will use it. Now, why revenue is down this year, that's a good question. Now, why revenue is down this year, that's a good question. So, I would look inside to see what we are doing differently, okay? Are we advertising it? Do people know that our pool is up and running? Are we doing special things there that would attract more people, or are we not? 'Cause something is different, something has changed between twenty fifteen and twenty seventeen. So, what would that be? Because our revenue is down considerably, forty percent. What's the plan? Uh, Mr. Trader, you know, nine months to the day, you said, "It's all about the business plan." So, show us the plan.
To answer your question about the forty percent deficit, I will refer to my, my manager, Ms. Jennifer Jennings.
Okay, and regarding to the deficit, and, and you just actually brought something to mind that I failed to mention to Teresa before, last summer, our marketing manager was on maternity leave, so there was probably less marketing. Again, that was not on my list for here. Again, when I say about the revenue, we had been, um, our swim team took a little bit of a nosedive, and we've rectified that this year, so we've already put new coaching staff in place to keep our revenues going up, we saw what was going on there. Again, we had a new team, or a team of, um, more qualified lifeguards and returning lifeguards who, um, who we, we hi, made a higher salary, we had more pool operators and WSI, um, so we were, really looked, um, as far as the safety of the pool goes. So, we've been working it, our programming basically has not changed that much, and keeping in mind of revenue, and this is one thing that I always want you all to keep in mind, is that we look at our revenue compared to expenses, but what's not included in our revenue is the kids that use our ca, our pool for camps. So, if we took that dollar amount for the whole afternoons that they were swimming from twelve-thirty until three-thirty, and if we put a dollar amount on each one of those heads, and also in the mornings when we give, you know, well over a hundred children swim lessons, so that's not also included in our revenue.
So, we are giving a lot of in-kind-
Yes.
-back to the community, and you're not accounting for it. And you should be, because we need to know that. That's revenue that we are picking up, um, because we are offering those lessons or those swim camps to the kids.
The revenue's going into Pitt Moyer rather than into, so you're seeing it on another end rather than at the actual pool.
Okay, so we need to see that in your pool numbers also.
We could probably do a pretty good guesstimate, 'cause if you, just taking splash camps for an example, splash camps, they do the morning activities in Pitt Moyer or on our fields, and then the afternoons are spent in, um, in, in the pool. So, for example, last year we did, and I'm just gonna round my number, um, we did about a hundred thousand dollars in splash camps, so Archie and I were actually talking about this earlier, so we would, if we even took like that, that fifty thousand dollars just for the splash camps, that's not our Jackson camp, and it's not our swim lessons. You know, that revenue, I mean, just to see what it actually, on the books, it's not looking like it's going in, but we're actually creating a lot more revenue and have a lot more going on in the pool than what the numbers reflect.
And, and you should be commended for doing this for the community, but we've gotta account for it. You know, it's gotta show up that this is in-kind, and that we are actually making more on the pool, but it's the city and, it's us who are, uh, we, sorry, who are, um, taking care of that expense.
Well, what you have to understand is that the splash camps is a recreation program under the Recreation Division, it is not under the Aquatics Program. We use the, uh, pool a, as an apparatus, as, as, as a, as a way of, uh, giving every child who's participating in a splash camp an opportunity to swim. But you have to understand, we have about seven different splash camps, we have arts splash, splash camps, we have tennis splash camps, uh, we have, uh, baseball, uh, splash camps, so on and so forth, but they are under the Recreation Division, not the Aquatics Division. In order for us to give that revenue to the Aquatics Division, we would have to move those programs under the Aquatics umbrella.
Okay, good, can I weigh in here? That's logistics, okay? When we're looking at how much does it cost to operate the pool, the chlorine I'm using in the afternoon for the kids that are in splash camp is in the cost that we just presented. So, I agree with you completely, and if you had another, you know, thirty-three thousand dollars of revenue resulted to the splash camps, you, you're recovering a hundred percent of your costs. I agree completely, I, it's the first I heard of this, okay? So, that's just accounting logistics of where it gets posted.
And, and, and I'm not criticizing programming, that's not what this is all about at all.
Right, no, but I agree with you. So, now we know, based on the testimony we've just heard, that in fact, the outdoor pool is recovering its cost. I think it's, it's safe to say that. I wanted to touch on two things that you said, um, or three things, actually. If, this is something to consider, and this is why I said, I said, you know, we haven't done any feasibility study, if Anarundel County is now building a third pool, do you know where that is?
I think you told me West County.
Okay, so now we have, not that I necessarily think anybody from West County would be driving to the city to go swimming, um, but again, it's just, if, if there is a local market, the local market is gonna shift as a result of that pool opening up in West County. So, the pool opening up in West County might draw from the pool in North County, it's hard to say, you know, it, where, depends where it's located. But again, we haven't looked at our market, would we be just drawing people who are going to Reva Road, and we're just taking it away from the county, or is there an expanded market for it, where, a separate market for it? We don't have a feasibility study that explores that, or that explores, they charge, you know, four dollars a day to, if you want to go into the Reva Road pool, and if we want to recover X percent of our costs, we need to be charging six. And does the market support charging six? And do we want to charge six if we're using taxpayer dollars, or do we see it as a recreational amenity that benefits the city population as a whole? So, there's that.
I, I, one, one comment, I think he said it's West County addressing BRAC.
Okay.
The new expansion there.
Okay.
So, I don't think they expect it to pull from the other two pools.
Yeah, and North County's not very far from there, though. So, but, but again, that's gonna be Anarundel County's problem. Back at the Finance Committee, um, we presented to you that, um, to replace the existing pool at the existing location was three point one million, if you added an air support structure, it was another one million three seventy-five, so that takes it up to four point four seven five. A therapeutic pool was nine hundred thousand. Um, replacing, renovating the bathhouse was another seven hundred and forty thousand. And then we had, um, cost estimates for various other components you may or may not want to include. Um, a competition pool, twenty-five meters by five lanes was eight twenty, a leisure pool, three thousand square feet, seven hundred and thirty-six, a waiting pool, ninety-three, a splash pool and spray ground, three ninety, um, two-body flume slides and shade structures, nine fifty. So, we, a retractable roof instead of a bubble, six million. So, we had, I believe, all of the iterations that you asked for, and what the cost would be of those different iterations.
And, and you did provide that with, to us. However, that's one bidder's, those are one bidder's numbers.
Uh, it wasn't a bidder, it wasn't a bidder, it was a, it was our consultant retained by DPW.
Okay, so one consultant's numbers. We've gotten additional numbers, we've gotten very different numbers, just in having discussions and trying to see if we can do more with the money we have.
Okay.
So-
So, if you will provide those numbers to me, I, the only thing I have seen is the email from, uh, yesterday or the day before that Ross provided, from someone at the Y who said they could build one for two million four seventy-five, or whatever it was. But we know nothing about that, like what the site, what site they had in mind, is that we can build you a pool for two million four seventy-five, but it's part of a design, build, maintain, operate package, because they're not in the business of just building pools for other people. They're not just gonna build us a pool and walk away. And so, I don't know if that is, they went to our existing site and looked at it there, if they went to Pitt Moyer and looked at it there, if it's a, doesn't include site costs and it simply includes pool construction, which I'm not even sure how you could do that if you didn't know the site that you were gonna build it on. So, we would, if, if, you know, we can have Public Works look at that, and, and take a look at it, but we didn't see anything on that until the afternoon of the seventeenth. I don't know if you have other estimates you've gotten from other people, um, you know, but they certainly haven't been provided to me, so I would, you know, if you have those, and if the council wishes to delay to explore that, we can do that, we are happy to do that, okay? But we just need to know what you want us to do. And then my third thing would simply be, I'm not aware of two grant opportunities, so if you would let me know what those are, that would-
I think they were sent to the mayor's office, and I'm not sure to whom, but I do have the names, and I'll forward you the names of the grants. The one is the Four Rivers Heritage Foundation, and the other is the National Recreation and Parks Association.
And Four Rivers would do a grant for a pool?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't know how large or how small-
Right.
-uh, because the Recreation Boards, I think, sent them to us, so they would have more information, but those are just two, and, and I suspect there may be more. Um, and I can let Alderman Arnett speak to the Y, but we should be clear, and I should be clear, I have no interest in outsourcing our Recreation and Parks. And so, any connection to the Y is simply to get information for something that we want to do that they've already done. And that number, two point four million, is the number they gave us, that's what it costs them to rebuild their enclosed pool. Now, we don't have any more specifics than that.
So, it's not that they could build a pool for us for that price, it's that's how much it costs them to rebuild?
Yes.
'Cause that was not how I read the email.
We really don't know, and then to this end, what I'm, uh, asking the Y, we're gonna ask for a Finance Committee meeting, and ask the Y to come down and explain the number, and explain how they do it, and explain why the cost that they're telling us, which is my primary source of information, alternate to the city's source of information, why are these so vastly different? What is the secret that you know that we can't find out? And you're absolutely right, Teresa, it could be that there's some externalities that we're not aware of and would not be able to take advantage of, and that puts that to rest. But it has been sort of the rub for the last eight years. I, I talked to Bob Agee this morning, this pool stuff started under Josh Cohen, and it continued through Mayor Panalitis, and it's continued on now. And, um, it has been, um, a, a source of friction. We do have from the Recreation Board, uh, a request for a more robust pool, the covered pool, the year-round pool. When we took a road trip, we talked to some of the different pools around the county and, in Baltimore, and one of the things we learned in Anarundel, uh, I mean Arnold, is that therapeutics actually subsidize the rest of the pool operation. So, you're absolutely correct, we don't have a feasibility study, in fact, we're flying blind, and that's not a way to fly. Now, I really do understand and agree with your urgency, we gotta make a decision, the sooner the better, although, if you look at the numbers you showed us, it almost feels like we'd be better going out of the pool business, 'cause you can't recover your costs.
Well, those are, um-
But, but here's why-
But those are for indoor pools.
Yeah.
Right? We know we can-
But here's why people do it without covering the costs, because it's good for the community. But again, we don't have a feasibility study. I'd like to hear from the Recreation Board and other sources, um, we, again, flying blind, we don't know how many people would come to a pool that has therapeutics. We don't know how many people would come, uh, in the wintertime. Now, I did talk to some people at the pool who said that they, in the, in the wintertime, they pay eight dollars a day to go use Reva, and they were overwhelmingly in favor of, yes, be much better if we had a re, year-round facility for us here. I think Mr. Trader's absolutely correct, uh, we don't know different fee structures, what the market will bear. I remember a ill-fated experiment that the council asked Mr. Woodward to do, where we said, "Let's raise our rates for everything," and we did, and it turns out economics isn't such a dismal science, because we raised the rates and the revenue went down, because people responded to the price. So, um, we need to know a lot more about what we're doing in that regard. I can't help but believe in the sentiment, I assume these are your words, Sheila, get it right, 'cause we, we don't have a, till, another chance for fifty more years. I think doing a little more fact-finding, thinking about a feasibility study, I will just conclude by saying, I think the thing that gives me unease is hearing from other sources, now more than one, that their pricing that they're facing is orders of magnitude different than what we're being told. And it, it could be they're all wrong, could be that they're just selling us the bill of goods, or whatever, but it could be that they're right. And I guess that's why I think a little more exploration with other sources, talking to other people, doing pools elsewhere, um, starting off with, here's our shopping list, tell us what it would cost, rather than, we have three point one million dollars, tell us what you can do, kind of an approach, is worth taking a little bit more time. And, um, we can do that through the committee process, we can do it through whatever is the most feasible, to use that word again, process, but, um, I feel, still feel that we need to be looking at the package, the best package we can give to our community that's affordable, uh, if it is that the general tax-paying population will subsidize that good for a smaller cohort, we need to make that deliberation and that decision, hopefully going from input. But I do get a lot of input, uh, from constituents, and I talked to some again this morning, and they are interested in a better pool facility than we have. Whether they'll be willing to pay for it, that's another question, but, uh, in any event, uh, I wholeheartedly support feasibility study, I wholeheartedly support, show you the information, we don't have it to give to you now, um, but we will get it, and, uh, then we can draw conclusions, so you can manage this part of the city's business.
I have a question.
Yes, Sheila, it is a, a business, a business plan that, that we have to set forward, especially if you try to implement a long-term, year-round pool. One of the, the parts of that business plan is a, a management system that's budgeted, that you know that you have, not only in the speculation of, of, of usage, of, of fees, but also in your budget. Everything goes up, gas and electric, the heating of the pool, the air differential has a separate system that has to coincide with the temperature of the pool. The temperature has to be, as we found out in our field study, has to be at least eighty-five degrees. Anything below that creates a, a, a real problem. In order to understand the needs of the people, and that's where we are, what are the needs of the target population that we are trying to address? Now, we know that there is an eclectic array of demographics in the city of Annapolis. In order to build a pool, you have to build it based on competition, you have to know what your competition is. We have a all-year-round pool less than five miles away, do we compete with that? And if we do compete with that, we better know why we are competing with that, and we better know that we can compete with that. For example, the Anarundel County Pool on Reva Road recovers sixty-six percent of cost. What percentage of that sixty-six percent do you think that we are going to get? How do you justify that, and how do you come to that conclusion? You know we're not gonna get all sixty-six percent.
Yeah, I don't know that.
I doubt it very seriously, being, being in the field and being a recreation professional, I doubt it very seriously. I'll give you an analogy. You have McDonald's, Wendy's, and Burger King across the street, everybody's making money, but they've all differentiated, differentiated themselves, and the mayor knows in the restaurant business, you differentiate yourself. How are we gonna differentiate ourselves with an indoor all, all-round pool? A therapeutic pool, which is upfront's gonna cost a million dollars? And how do we recover that? And how long will it take? I think what we need, really need to understand- I think what we need, really need to understand is from a business perspective, what we should do and how we should do it, and what are the needs of the people? And we all know that the moderate income to low-income population of the city of Annapolis are the majority users of the Truxton Park Pool. So are they going to be able to afford an $8 to $10 raise in cost in an all-around, year-round pool? Will the population that can afford that, will that be enough to sustain an all-year-round pool? These are the questions that we have to ask. These are the serious questions that we have to ask in order for us to make a feasible decision.
Mr. Trader...
So that's why we need a feasibility study.
But we asked this question nine months ago.
Mr. Chair, can we get some order? Because I think some of the rest of us would like to speak.
I hadn't finished, but okay.
Well, you've had the floor for a while.
Oh, you're keeping track.
So I just want to jump in and just start off by going into some background here. I grew up, I've been a competitive swimmer for most of my life. Swam for the YMCA in elementary school, in high school, swam for the team in college, US Masters after college. I've been to state, national competitions. I've gone to the county facility to get their daily swim practice. They have in the morning for residents. I've been trained as a rescue diver over there. I've been to the Truxton Pool. In the past, I've been over there in the summer for the three-day-week practices that are over there in the morning. I take my son there. That's the pool I go to with my son right now. And so that's, so it just tells you, I've been around pools my whole life. And so I really don't want to see this delayed. I don't want to have to be the father who tells his son that he doesn't have a pool in FY '20 because his father didn't make a decision when there was a clear path forward and we had all the money to do it. I know it's more complicated than that, but sometimes it's not. Especially when you're talking to a seven-year-old. But in any case, I think, in terms of the revenue, I think there are a lot of things that may contribute. But part of it is because the facility, and this is nothing against the management or the staff, but the pool's just getting old. The facility's getting old, the showers. The temperature's all over the place. Sometimes you have all hot, all cold. It's just, there are very little seats there. So if you wonder why people don't go, there's no place to sit. You have to bring your own chair because there just aren't too many left. And granted, that's part, you know, hopefully we can fund that in the future. But, you know, the facilities, if the facilities, what do they say? If you build it, they will come? In this case, if it's in really good shape, I think you will get people who go to use the facility. I think, and I wanted to comment on the rec advisory board. They did send a letter, and they're asking, basically saying they wanted to get more input into the pool. And I'm sympathetic, but I think, again, we have a clear path forward. We have a set amount of money to do a seasonal pool. Let's do it. But I think I would like to bring in, if possible, the, and maybe you do this already, bring in the rec advisory board to help maybe work on some of the other program aspects and the marketing and how we can just come to the table towards how to improve the experience at the pool. But I also want to make sure I thank staff because I did attend the finance committee where I heard the presentation from Mr. Trader and from Public Works, I believe. And, you know, they had a lot of information in there about, again, the menu option that I thought was requested. I'm not quite sure what else we need at this point. But the bottom line is, we can't build it around the current rec center because of the limitations that city manager detailed. There isn't enough space. It would impact the program open space facilities that we put in there. Not to mention parking issues. So it pretty much has to be on this side where the existing pool is now. And, but I do have a couple of suggestions in terms of improvements if it would fit into that 3.1. Because I think it could help it get more money and actually generate more revenue. So one of it, which we, and I did mention this at the finance committee, is adding, making sure there's a sixth lane, a six-lane pool. Because again, as a competitive swimmer, it's important you have, you know, you have two teams usually, and you have to have three versus three. You can't have three versus two because it's just not fair. You have to have equal lane numbers. And I think if you had six lanes, I'm guessing it would be more appealable, marketable to those swim teams. And my understanding is there is a need for places for swim teams to find places to practice. And especially in the summer, they would love to have these kind of facilities. And regarding the pool house, I hear you that it would cost $700,000, and I don't think, mind you, since I don't think we should pay for that now. I think stick with the 3.1 million. But I think in the future, when we do have a chance for the city manager to work her magic on the budget and we can look at funding that in the future, especially when we have a better handle on all of our debt. Because those facilities, again, do need replacing, but let's start with the pool. But I also want to mention the audience. One of the other reasons I support a summer pool is because that is a unique experience. The only people who have access to a summer outdoor pool are private communities. That's why when you go to the pool, when I go there with my son, it's majority, it's very diverse. The population is very diverse in terms of people who use this pool. Because it is those people who don't have the privilege to have that in their own community. So again, and it's not just about my son, but I don't want to be telling those people that they're going to be out of a pool because we want to look at all these other options. I think we've heard everything we need to hear. So again, let's just keep it simple. You know, sometimes the simplest path is the best path. Not always, but I think in this case, it is. And so I'm a firm supporter of just bringing in a summer pool, using the money we have. Again, it's done and moving on.
Alderman Tyrone?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quickly, on the 3.1 million, how much, is that from the consultant? The verification that 3.1 will cover the cost of replacing in-kind, for lack of a better word? Is that from the consultant?
Yes.
Okay. So the next step would be to issue an RFP to put that as the budget?
Correct.
Okay.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to, apologies that I arrived late, so I don't know if you covered this at the beginning, but the 3.1 includes recreational, competitive, and splash spray, right? Is what I remember from the finance committee meeting, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, in 2016, we published the feasibility study. I hope you've all seen this. Concept one...
Excuse me, it wasn't a market feasibility study.
Right. This was assuming same location as the existing pool, outdoor pool. The concept one was 3.5, concept two was 2.8. The bathhouse had a few different options. The recommended was a major renovation. I would like to point out that it's currently not meeting ADA standards. So I would suggest at the very least a major renovation to the bathhouse. That is about $600,000. So those are the numbers. And then a replacement of the bathhouse is upward $1.5, $1.8 million, around there.
So just because I don't have that in front of me, I remember seeing that without the renovation of the bathhouses, the 3.1 would cover those three items I mentioned early on, right?
Sorry, I didn't hear anything.
So the 3.1 would, without the bathroom renovations, the bathhouse renovations, it would cover splash and spray, or whatever it's called, recreational, competitive?
So the 3.1...
So concept two is a competition pool, and I believe that's six-lane, waiting pool, two-body flume slides, shade structure, miscellaneous water toys, floatables, those are those spray structures. And then site work. And also, I would like to point out, these are 2016 numbers, so we have to assume some escalation and contingencies in there.
That basically, that sums it up, and we do have some contingencies built in there. Like the simpler pool, one of the main differences between the two options is the more expensive option has some rather aggressive body slides, which is what draws people and what we typically find produces revenue. The simpler pool has most of the same amenities, but kind of just dialed back a little bit. You know, the subtotal for the pools itself is about $1.9 million. And then we start talking about contingencies, overhead and profits, and things like that, and it starts going up. So I don't see that these numbers really are too disparaging from the types of numbers that you're talking about for just a simple pool. But this does not include either an air-inflated structure, bubble, or a hardcover. This is purely outdoor pool, which was the direction of this study at the time.
Yeah, thank you. So I do want to just start by actually thanking Alderman and Lason because without you tying the money to Truxton Pool Park, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. So thank you for doing that last year. That's pretty significant. And so I've been, gone back and forth on this for the last several months as we've been discussing it. And then, you know, I've personally come to the conclusion that it is a community pool, as indicated, right? I mean, that's the essence, that's the spirit of it, as explained by my colleague Alderman Savage right now as well. And the idea of getting where we could ideally want to of an enclosed pool and so forth would be a few million more dollars than what we currently have at a minimum, right? And so you take the $3 million that the city manager represented early on, that's an additional $200,000 debt service from that as well. I, for one, am not comfortable with, especially when we're, if we're talking about borrowing more money, the conversation should be around Hillman and other projects, not the pool. And so maintaining the respect around the community essence of the pool, the outdoor pool, the unique characteristic of being the only accessible and affordable pool to many who wouldn't otherwise afford it, is a key element driving this. As well as, I do have a lot of hesitation with the why coming in and sending numbers because we do know their ultimate, and it's no secret that they've been wanting for years to take over the maintenance operation of parks and recs, essentially. So I'm a little weary of that because they're not in the pool business. They're in the operation, in the operating business. And I know Derek and Trader can speak much more to that than I can. And we have the 3.1 million right now. That, with that money, we would have a state-of-the-art community outdoor pool, would we not? And so the fact that we have been, we have kept patching it up year to year, I think, and we're going to continue to patch it up for at least two more years, even if we'd make the decision today, I would just support going forward with the 3.1 in-kind outdoor project today, if that's the will of the body.
Alderman Finlayson?
You keep calling on me when I don't raise my hand. Obviously, you want me to say something. So I will reiterate that we can do what we want with the money that we have. It requires more work, more research, maybe more analysis of what is doable. Mr. Trader made a comment about what, about the business plan that we asked for nine months ago, that we should have had, okay? We are being given information, and there is more to be had. Now, we can settle for what we have and take the easy route and just go forward, or we can do the heavy lifting and make sure that we have a pool that provides all the services that will serve, better serve our community. That is our choice, okay? I am not falling for, the sky is falling because we've been down this road before, and it hasn't fallen yet. That's not entirely true because on that side of the room, the ceiling did fall in. But it's been secured, so we're good. But I would much prefer that we take a minute, look at what we're asking for, and make sure we have all the numbers, and we move forward. And before I go on, I want to thank the members of the Recs and Park Board who are in the audience this evening. Would you all just raise your hand? They're committed to our city. They have done some of the heavy lifting by asking the community what they wanted to see in our recreational facility. And I thank you for your letter, which they gave us nine months ago, and for all of their work and commitment to our city. But I say, let's do it right. I say, take a few minutes. It doesn't have to mean all summer, but take a few minutes and get some other information. Because we are hearing, and it's Ross and I, but we have sought out others who do this. And it's not to disparage the consultants that we have, but that's one voice. And I think we owe the community more than a single voice. You know, Mr. Schneider is not going to let us do a single bid, period. You know, he wants to hear three voices and three options. And I think we deserve to hear three options, too. So I'm going to ask you once again, and I will provide you with the resources that have been coming to us, offering services and giving us prices for the different resources. So I'm just going to say, our timeline doesn't have to hurt our recreational facility. You know, I think we can work within the timeline and not be without a pool. And I think, again, that the community deserves the best that we can give them, not something that we can rush through today.
Alderman Tyrone?
I'm going to put my construction hat on here. In the construction terms, this project is under Division 12. And what you find out with these projects is that the swing value isn't that high. There aren't a lot of variables with the actual tangible pool itself. So I missed the beginning. Are you, could you identify who you are and what you're looking at when you're giving us this pricing? And that's my first question. I don't mean to be rude. I didn't catch your name and your title and your background and what you're looking at. And then the second question is, what is, Teresa said 4.75. What is that? And just talk a little bit more about, because if I, this is who I would go to in construction. I would go for Division 12 stuff. I would go to a consultant. And what worries me is that you guys are usually low, and you throw in contingencies to cover what you don't know. So why don't you talk a little bit more about what you have in front of you?
I apologize for not introducing myself. I'm Betsy McKeon. I'm an engineer in public works under David Jarrell. Yes, so he's on, he's out right now, so I'm here. And I will be the project manager managing the design and construction of the pool. And so the numbers I was referring to are directly from the consultants, SCI architects, in this 2016 feasibility study, where they outlined two different concepts. So that's where I was referring to. The number that Teresa mentioned, do you just want to talk about it, Teresa? Okay, so the numbers that David had presented at the, I believe it was the June Finance Committee meeting. I had worked on taking numbers from the feasibility study as well as consulting with Jim Emher, and ensuring that I was applying appropriate escalation since those are two-year-old values, and also just adding contingency. So I did add some contingency. I can pull up, so you were wondering about the 5.2 number that Teresa had mentioned?
Well, I started with this.
Okay, so...
About the bathhouse.
Okay, so the 5.2 million came from a 3.1 for a replacement pool. So that was a little bit more than what is outlined in the 2016 study because I added escalation and a bit more contingency. The, so an airport, air support at the bubble is 1.375. That gets us to 4.475. And the bathhouse major renovation is about 3/4 of a million dollars, which gets you to 5.2.
Is the demolition of the existing included in those numbers?
Demo is included in the 3.1.
Okay.
Does that answer all your questions?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few, two comments and a question. I mean, I understand my colleagues want to see, you know, certain amenities get added to this pool, but I just still haven't seen the hard data in terms of how that's possible. I mean, I feel like all we have to go on are professionals. We have the professional staff, engineers, professionals in the rec department, and the consultant to go off of. And their numbers are saying something different. So if you have anything... So if you have anything that indicates otherwise, I mean, I get the YMCA saying they can do it, but they haven't provided, at least I haven't seen any hard numbers from them. So I'm going off the information I have. And in terms of the, you know, the sky may not be falling, but the bottom of the pool is falling out. I mean, it seems like every summer when we have practiced in there, there's at least one occasion where we can't practice because the pool just loses water because of the hole, a void or something underneath the aluminum. And they have to refill it with freezing cold water, which isn't always refreshing to swim in for an hour and a half. But I do have a question, though, because isn't this, this would have to go out to bid presumably, so we're, I guess, going to give them a set guideline of, a kind of a box to work in? Or how much, are we going to just say, here's 3.1 million, here, what can you do with it in terms of these other amenities? What's the approach going to be? And do you want us to negotiate any lease as part of that?
Not if you want it in 2020. So the process that the initial draft we drew up was, you know, an RFQ process, two-step process where we'd get qualified bidders, shortlist it, and then, you know, award a design-build contract. So within the statement of work for a statement of qualifications, there are various options built in, or we described sort of what we wanted. And that's what, you know, initially transpired when we delivered that draft back in October. There was some questions from both Alderman Finlayson and Alderman Arnett. And we stopped the process, and that's why we're here again today.
But if I could clarify, we've got options one and two. We've decided that option two is the one we can afford based on the consultant's study within the 3.1 million. So we would put option two out to bid, right, for a six-lane competitive pool, a wading pool. I think it has like, they call it a beach entrance or something, like some kind of gradual entrance. It's got a splash thing with a moderate slide that I would go on because I wouldn't a million years go on one of those other ones. And then you can do add alternatives to that? Is that correct?
Yeah. So in a draft, we put in, I believe, you know, 2.8 million with 300,000 in contingency as a upset limit. Because we wanted to divulge what the budget is so we don't get soup to nuts as far as the design. So I can certainly provide the new folks here the previous draft because you wouldn't have seen it then soon. You're going to see what's in it.
Give it to the old folks, too.
Okay, I'll provide it to everybody.
And if someone would forward to me whatever you have from the Recreation Advisory Board because I've never seen that.
Okay.
Alderman Finlayson?
We have it on our tables right now. You know, the six-lane feature is, was the least desirable according to our previous city manager, Tom Andrews, the grandfather of swimmers. So I'm not clear still on the features that are being included and why. But what we gathered, and everybody has a copy, and Teresa, I'll send it to you, of that video of the discussion from the last meeting in October, nine months ago. But I'm not clear on step two, Teresa, that you're referring to. We did the RFQ, and that's what got us our consultant, is that correct?
Oh, yes, for the initial study, an assessment of the pool.
Okay, so we got those numbers. And so now do we do an RFP with those numbers based on what the consultant has given us?
Yeah.
Okay. So does the consultant bid on that project?
Not specifically, no.
Jim Emmer, Smallen Emmer, Lookovic Architects. We produced this study. And the concepts here are basically placeholders to establish a budget. So whether it's, you know, and you can, and it gives you some idea of the variation from two point, you know, two and a half to three and a half million dollars, what you can get for that. Usually with a design-build, you can use this as a basis of where that next consultant would go in terms of for design. Or you could also supplement that with some more description. You know, I mean, this shows a six-lane pool as, because it was part of the direction we had at the time was, give us a general idea, you can see what's here, what's the state of the art in terms of providing a facility that would address all of the components that are there now and all of the constituents that use the pool now, and expand it a little bit to state of the art. So that's kind of what this is. This doesn't mean that this is what you would have to bid. And sometimes we pursue, as a consultant, design-build, and when we'll team with the contractor, and sometimes we'll just get a written list of, these are the types of things we want in a pool.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and it should be fairly descriptive, you know, is there a six-lane competitive pool? Is there not? Are there 75-meter or 75-yard pools for training? Or they're, you know, is it, or is it just for a training pool? Is it for a competition pool? And those are the kind of things that need to be sorted out, I think, before the next RFP goes out to bid, to establish what the budget is and what components go into that pool. And that usually is different enough, or it's usually a very different step so that, and because there are times that we do a feasibility study, and then when we see the RFP come out, we can also pursue that as a member of a construction team to bid that competitively, as you say, with, you know, two or three other voices. I mean, I've got no particular desire to sell this particular pool. This was done, you know, as a result of the original RFP and the selection process and the bid process. And we won the bid to do this job, produce this study, which involved evaluating the existing aluminum pool, and we did some boring through it, checking out the ground underneath of it. We did an evaluation of the bathhouse where, you know, it met and didn't meet requirements. And we provided alternatives for immediate repairs, long-term repairs, or replacement. And there are various options in the study that describe that. So it was meant to be a broad brush of, you know, here's what you've got, here's what the problems are, and here's some things that you could do as replacements to give you an idea of budget. And that's, that's all that this was meant to do. So you've got that as a springboard for Brian to do the next, the next step here in terms of what, what components want to go into that pool. And do, put together a request for proposal, or request for qualifications for the next step.
So there's another RFQ that's going to go out before the RFP?
Well, that's up, that's up to you folks, but...
No, it would be one package for a design-build firm or design-build team. What Jim's describing, we put in a laundry list of potential things that they could do. Somebody could, you know, be shortlisted, and they come back and say, well, we can build you a water park. And we might say, well, that's a great idea. If we can do that for $3 million, then that might be the one we select. So there would be, you know, different concepts coming back from the different designers. But they should address the laundry list that we provide in the bid package.
Well, then I guess the obvious question for me is why we wouldn't include a covered pool as one of those options?
We could, we certainly could.
I mean, if we're going to do it and we're going to just send out a list of options for the developers to select from, why wouldn't we include that within the confines of the resources that we have?
If we make it an absolute must, we know that the cover's going to cost, you know, 1.3 million dollars. So that leaves, you know, one and a half million for the pool and the structures in the pool. And that might give you a very tiny pool. So it could be that we ask for that as an optional design with whatever cost that is for the bubble. But if it's included in the one, in the 3.1 million dollar budget, you're going to get a smaller footprint.
Well, I would hope that we would include it as an option because somebody might be able to come back and meet it. Because that's what some of us are hearing, that we can, somebody can do it, others can do it, you know? A gentleman I spoke to who did the Naval Academy pool said he doesn't know what the problem is. So we're having, you know, we're hearing different information. We just want the best information for what we want. So why not include that as an option? And if they can make it work within the 3-point, or the 3 million, why not?
So the only thing I would say to that is, that's going to be the construction side. Can you do a bubble within the, you know, the 3 million dollars for construction? You then also have the operating side, and it will cost more to operate a year-round pool. We don't have a feasibility study that shows what the demand or market is for the use of that pool, or what revenue structure we could, you know, how much we could charge per day, for a membership, whatever it might be, to support and recover those operating costs. So you might very well be able, I don't know whether you could, if you could build it for that, you are still going to have operating costs that you have not identified what they are, and you have revenue that you have not identified what the market is that will do that. So if we were to do that, do you also want me to transfer 50,000 to 80,000 out of the contingency account to do a feasibility study? Or do you just want to put it out there, what, you know, what can you build for us for this amount of money?
Well, first of all, I'm going to flip that script because I'm going to say, you're going to generate additional revenue if it's a year-round pool. And if it's a therapeutic pool, and if it's a lap pool, you're going to generate additional revenue. And yes, on the other side of that coin is, you have additional costs because you have staffing, okay? So I'm going to take it from, yeah, we're going to make more money.
But what I don't know is...
And it's going to cost us more, but we're also going to make more.
But without a feasibility study, I don't know what the market is for a therapeutic pool and what we can expect. I don't know what the market is for simply daily swimmers in the morning coming in to do laps. So I don't, yes, it will generate more revenue, maybe. I don't, you know, I don't know how much more revenue it will generate, nor do I have an idea of what the additional cost would be. So there's no doubt it changes the equation. I just don't, without, I don't have the expertise to know how it changes the equation.
Well, and see, that's part of what we've been asking for.
Okay, so that, so what I'm telling you is, city management does not have that expertise. So that requires outside expertise, that requires money to pay for the outside expertise, that's probably 50,000 to 80,000 dollars. So if that's the path you want to go, I will come to you with a fund transfer to take money out of the contingency account to do that. But I need to know, all I want to know is what you want me to do. That's all I want to know. And I will do it.
Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm still cautious about, I'm nervous about the bubble idea. I just feel like there are going to be hidden costs. I mean, we know in general from the great research that Mr. Trader's done that pools, they don't make money. So even if they do generate a little more revenue by being open year-round, it's going to generate more costs. And so ultimately, that's still going to drive up our costs to be even higher, even if it's generating a little more money. And I don't think we're in a situation as a city to be incurring that cost. I also want to point out this letter that was on our desk that's highlighted yellow from Stafford County, Virginia. They had a bubble up, and granted, this was a year-round bubble, which I think, we're not talking about a year-round bubble. But anyway, they said there were always problems with air quality and pick mold because there was no way to ventilate the bubble. The bubble was removed and a real indoor pool was built and opened. So, you know, they, I am concerned about that maintenance cost and a lot of hidden costs if it turns out we actually have to remove this in the future, in the future. So I don't, I'm not really keen on including that as an option because of the cost or the associated feasibility study.
I think there are two things that are important to note. One is the article that you have. Please read it. It will give you a industry's insight on the pool management and cost recovery. Number two, the reason that Anarona County is able to recruit 87% of the North County pool because the target market is family and children. That is the reason. They have targeted that pool to family, leisure time, and children. The reason they get 66% from Reba Road because basically it's a combination of competitive, usually one-dimensional practice, so on and so forth. Your market, your money-making market in recreation, and any professional in the recreation business knows, it is leisure, family, and children when it comes to pools.
I have a question for the city manager before I yield the floor. What else do you need, what do you need today? Like, should we do a straw poll vote? Should we, do you need a resolution from us to provide direction?
I, I, I think you could do a straw poll. You just say how you feel about it, right? I just want to know that if you want to pursue an indoor pool, I have direction to do that. If you don't want to pursue an indoor pool, I know that, and then I'll just have Director Gerald begin the bid process.
An outdoor pool?
Sorry, an outdoor pool, yeah. So I just want to know, I just need to know where you guys stand.
You could probably answer Sheila's questions except for the feasibility study, right? I mean, all those questions, if you have somebody that can bring us a bid, give it to Teresa, right? If you have, so it can't be anecdotal, and it can't be this thing where we're not getting the answers we want to hear. If you can provide the evidence, then we can go on that. But could you just tell us your qualifications to make this study? How many, you obviously are experienced at what you do.
Yes, and I, the study that we did here had a specific direction. It was a goal. Now, looking at this, then you say, well, what if we had a covered, portion of a covered pool? So it would require a repeat of a part of this study with new criteria, okay? What is the feasibility of putting an indoor/outdoor pool on this, or an outdoor pool that would eventually expand into an indoor pool, or those kinds of things? That you could then look at that in, again, a broad brush, but with different criteria to address the outcome that is, you know, one of the options here in terms of what you can afford today and what you might want ultimately. Does a, does an air-supported structure serve a need immediately, but not really a long-term need? So does an outdoor facility generate revenue that can then be, can you use an air-supported structure temporarily until there's an outdoor pool? So I mean, so those kind of variables you can put, you can look at in a study like this, as opposed to putting out to a design-build, which would be just too broad. I mean, you just, you wouldn't, you're trying to get the answer in a study so you can direct a consultant like myself, or there are other people out there who do it, to say what the physical components of that might be, how much indoor, how much outdoor. And you might look at three different options, you know, one...
Alderman Finlayson?
Are you saying that you can adapt what you have done to include...
It would be, it would be like another chapter of this book.
Okay.
Because you'd say, this was done to say, okay, what's feasible to replace the existing pool, and how much would it cost? That's what this is. If at the same, you know, if you said, okay, well, now we also, now that we know kind of what the quality of that pool is and what some of the revenue is, let's also look at, what if we did an outdoor pool with a bubble? What if we did an indoor pool? And what if we did some options in between? You know, an outdoor pool that, so anything that becomes year-round at the current site has to take that bathhouse and make it a year-round bathhouse because right now it's only a three-month bathhouse. So, you know, so then you look at the feasibility of converting that to a year-round, or then does that cross the line and say, well, we really should tear it down and just build another one? And so those are the kind of things and the kind of costs you'd get back from a study like this, as well as the marketability, which was made reference to. And we work with national consultants who have access to information about other facilities in the area, what they offer, how they compete, what your facility would have to be to compete with those other facilities. And some of those financial studies go right down to, well, how much do you charge for admission? Do you have concessions? How much do you charge for a hot dog? All, all that comes into it. How much, you know, that's where you start getting into the, the operating costs. But that's also based on a specific type of facility. So, that might be a two-stage study. So, you're not studying three different facilities. You're, you're studying three different facilities in an architectural standpoint or an aquatic standpoint. And then you're looking at some financial marketability of one or more of those, depending on, on what seems to be, be feasible.
So, are you saying that you can do that within the confines of the contract that you have?
Well, the, the fee is gone, but it would be up to Mr. Snyder to determine if he can expand that study, that, the contract.
So, it's, it's not gonna cost you the additional revenue that the city manager's talking about?
Yes, yes, it would. That, that's the study that, that it would take, and.
What we paid him is gone. The amount we had budgeted is gone.
That, that produced this study based on a specific direction.
Okay, so the answer is no, you can't expand what you've done within the confines of your contract? Okay.
Financially, no.
No, well, that's what I'm asking. Okay, so then we have another.
Coleman Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, whoa, stop. Five minutes ago, I was not confused, and now I'm confused. I, I, I recognize and appreciate your expertise and what you can do in all the future studies. But I think right now, we have to see what we can afford. And the best way to do that is a linear path and get an RFP out with very simple parameters and what our budget is. He, I assume your study, based on a replacement in kind, would be included in that RFP package? Can't we make this simple, Brian?
Again, we, we can put whatever.
No, don't say that. Wouldn't you mean whatever we want? I mean, you don't do that. I don't mean to be rude, but.
Based on, based on what was just said, let me make a suggestion.
Yeah.
That we put this out for bid.
Thank you.
As a, as an outdoor pool, in-kind replacement. And we have an add alternate, if that's the right word to use, that would allow us, that would allow it to be built, the foundation, or whatever it would be, such that you could add.
Yep.
A bubble or a retractable roof at a later date. So, we get it, we get an outdoor pool built now. It ensures that we're gonna be able to provide the services to our citizens a couple of summers from now. It leaves open an option of a bubble or a retractable roof, or whatever it is. And if you wanna pursue that, it then gives us time to do a feasibility study. Is that an option?
And we can design it for enhancements, right? Is that what you're saying? We can design it in such a way that we can grow into therapy if we need to.
I don't know if the existing site supports that or not. I don't know the site stuff and critical area and all that stuff. Is that an option?
But, but the issue would be, you're gonna use the entire three million dollars for the outdoor pool. Whereas, if you add the outdoor option to the RFP, then maybe we get the bubble in addition to, and stay within our budget. What you're proposing is that the whole three million is gonna be used for outdoor pool.
No, no, no.
And not until, you know, better days, ten years down the road, may there be another option to cover it? When we have an opportunity now to include it. Now, if you wanna put it out, then we don't put out for three million dollars. We put it out for two million dollars.
Well, if you're putting it out for a competitive bid.
You don't give them the budget. You don't give them the number.
Well, I'm, I'm just going on what you just said.
But even if there is a number, even if there is a number. If Brian can build it, says, I'll build it for you for three million, and I can build it for you for two and make a profit, I'm gonna put in my best offer that's gonna get me the bid so I can make money.
Well, of course, and that's what I'm saying about adding.
So, if you build it, I, the fact that we're saying, put it out for bid as an outdoor pool, and you're saying that's gonna use up the whole three million, only if that's the competitive price to build an outdoor pool is that gonna happen?
But we have given them three million as the price tag. Well, but we have. Because that's what we've been given. You know, if you look at the diagrams, and everybody hasn't had the benefit of seeing all the diagrams that I've seen. But they all stay within the two and a half, three million dollar price range. Do they not? The ones that you presented, the glossy pictures to us? So, they, they know what the window is of money to spend, okay? So, I'm saying, why not give them, and you've said this yourself, let them figure out how to make it work? This is the money that we have. This is what we want for that money.
We can, construction-wise, put it out however you want. But if we put it out with a bubble, and it comes back that you can do a bubble, you can do an, a, a pool with a bubble for three million dollars. Great. Now, I got operating costs to deal with. And do we also want to explore the operating feasibility side of revenue and market demand? Or, do you want me to put it out for bid? If I can do a bu, a pool with a bubble for three point one million, you want me to do it? The operating costs are what they are. We'll, we'll, we'll figure it out in the budget and how we're gonna pay for it.
We have been asking for those numbers.
Okay, no one on this staff.
Okay.
Has that expertise. So, if that's what you want, you need to have me transfer money to hire someone with that expertise. Or you don't get the information. No one on this staff has that expertise.
Okay. What, what I'm hearing is, we're gonna make it cost us more, no matter what. And that's gonna be a deterrent, because some people around this day aren't gonna wanna spend another penny on this pool. So, that's a deal breaker. That is a deal breaker. I say, go forward, put it in the RFP, and we will figure out, because revenues will be generated. And in the interim, we'll be able to develop the partnerships with the medical center for therapeutic use. And we'll be able to pursue those grants that the Recreation and Parks Committee has sent to us with opportunities for additional revenues. And we'll be able to do things in advance to make sure we can cover the costs. That's something we should be doing. Staff should be doing, okay? So, no, I'm not gonna say, spend more money on it. Because I know that's not gonna work.
Mr. Mayor, can we?
Coleman Savage.
Call the, uh, there's not really a question to call, but can we get to an end game here?
Yeah.
I don't know what else we need. Do we need to go around?
I mean, I think, Theresa.
Do you have an idea?
When you design, or Brian, when you design the RFP, can there be a Sheila option in? I mean, we obviously have the budget. We don't, we don't have an allowance for a therapeutic at three point one, do we? I mean, that's not in there. But if someone can deliver that, I mean, can that be written in such a way?
Again, we, we, we can put whatever we want in the RFP.
It'd be answered, yes. Great to say that.
Yes. I, I would like Jim to weigh in, perhaps, on how the bidding community would respond to such a.
Wait, sorry, just, I'm gonna interrupt here.
On the Rodriguez.
Related, because what the city manager said made a lot of sense to me in the terms of like, like the combining, like, the way I had thought about it before you said that was, what if there's a, these are required for the RFP, and then these are nice to have, if you can do it.
Can, can I just make a comment? I, I, some understanding, this is gonna be a request for proposals as opposed to an invitation for bids. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, you're gonna be receiving technical and cost proposals. You're gonna be, you're gonna develop some sort of scoring guidelines and evaluation criteria. Someone's gonna, you're gonna have some, some people that are gonna score the potential proposals and determine the highest-ranked offeror or proposer? Is that, is that how this is gonna proceed? As opposed to having bid specs that have to be met at a price?
Yes. It would be two steps, though. We, we would do a statement of qualifications first, then shortlist.
Okay.
To probably three bidders to move forward with formal proposals. Because those, there's, this type of bid, there would be a lot of documents.
Or bid or request for proposal, right? Because it's not a bid.
They're basically, they're basically gonna design.
Okay.
The, the, a pool and structure with, and with costs attached to various options. If that's what you're asking.
Right, well, 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 because the difference is, with an IFB, you're gonna be telling them, I want this, 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 and this. And what's your price? But a request for proposals, you're asking for, you're essentially saying, we want an outdoor pool, or we want an indoor pool. How are you gonna do it? And in your technical proposal, and at what price? In your cost proposal. And then someone's gonna have to rank the different offers and decide who's the highest-ranked offeror. As opposed to, best, the, the lowest price wins.
Yeah, well, we obviously can't identify exactly what we want, as demonstrated for the last hour and a half.
Understood. I just wanna make sure that we have the parameters upon which this competitive solicitation is gonna be issued. So, because that will, that informs the city council as to how they want to address what it is that the city wants. Because it's one thing to say, this is specifically what the city wants, and you've gotta meet each one of these criteria. Just give us a price. As opposed to, generally speaking, we want an outdoor pool or an indoor pool, you know, the six lanes, or, you know, therapeutic, you know, functionality. You go ahead and tell us the manner and method and means by which you're gonna do it in your tech, in your technical proposal. You tell us how, what, how much it's gonna cost in your cost proposal. We look at the different proposals, and we rank them, and we say, okay, this meets, this is the best value. This meets the city's needs. As opposed to, oh, you know, boom, 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 comes in a three million. That's our, that's our awardee, right? Okay, so, I just want the city council to understand that. Because it's a different, you know, there are two different ways of approaching a bid or a proposal. And, and it will inform you as to what your expectations are in terms of what is gonna be the solicitation. And one other point, because I'm not sure if I heard it correctly or not, but we have to be careful in, in the event that our, our consultant at this stage is planning on being an offeror in this competition, that, that's gonna raise a question mark. Because if your solicitation is adapted based on the consultant's recommendations, we wanna be sure that, that, we wanna be sure that we don't allow that to happen if this vendor wants to be a competitor in this process. Because there's a, there's an inherent conflict with relying on a consultant's advice in putting together your solicitation and having that same vendor compete against others for the award of the work that arises from the consulting. So, we would need to be careful to keep that separate if, if in fact, this vendor is planning on proposing it. And in fact, a hard look would have to be taken by the city manager and the, and the purchasing officer as to whether it's appropriate for the consultant who is advising you, i- i- to the extent that the consultant is informing your solicitation, you've gotta make sure that there's not a conflict there, that this, that this consultant then has a leg up, an unfair leg up on the competition in that bidding on the work for which it consulted. I just wanted to make you aware of that as you proceed.
Good news is, no one's listening to your advice. Just checking. So, I'm not gonna call a question, but I think we should take a straw poll here. Move forward with Theresa's recommendations. Theresa's recommendations should offer enhancements to it. So, let's go forward on what we've been advised on on three point one for the outdoor pool. But can we leave options available for the bidders to say, give us a bubble? Give us a therapeutic pool? Is that a possibility?
Yes.
All right. So, let's do a straw, a straw poll? Can we do that, or no?
No. Would you clarify what we're straw polling on?
Okay, so.
Okay, let me.
Yeah.
How about if I tell you what I've heard?
Uh-huh.
What I plan to do. If you guys don't like it, then you can tell me. You don't like what I plan to do. Okay? So, I'm gonna put out, we're gonna put out an RFQ, RFP for an outdoor pool. We will include some alternative that would allow us to add a bubble or retractable roof at a future date. We will include an alternative that does a bubble now.
Theresa, sorry, I distracted. Can you start?
I don't know if I can say it all again.
My colleague's talking.
First is just an, an in-kind replacement of an outdoor pool. Second is, add a bubble. Third is, do an outdoor pool, build it so that you can, in the future, add some kind of a retractable roof, a bubble? Like, if that would change how you put the pool in the ground, or what site development stuff you had to do, okay? That, that would make that an option. We can do an option on therapeutic if we think that therapeutic is what's gonna generate some revenue. So, we'll put that out, and we'll see what we get.
But I'm not clear. You're giving three options, four options?
Yeah, a therapeutic pool is only gonna, so, so one is an outdoor pool. One is an outdoor pool structured so that in the future, you could add a bubble or a retractable roof. One is a pool with a bubble right now. One is a pool with a bubble with therapeutic. Because if you don't have a bubble, you can't have therapeutic.
Well, you can, but you can only have it seasonally.
Well, is that feasible? I mean, is that an option?
No, because you've got to heat a therapeutic pool.
Right.
Even if it's connected to the regular pool. And what is, one of the disadvantages is, some of us saw these pools, and some of us did not. Because we see, we've seen what the options are. But I'm not clear on why we're giving them four options.
Because that's what I heard you want.
No, that's not what you heard.
Okay, then, okay, then I have misunderstood. Because I said, I would tell you what I thought I've heard. That's what I thought I've heard, so I've misunderstood.
Coleman Savage.
If we can't do a straw poll, and with the market house, we, we at least, we, we asked everybody and got our thoughts. Can we at least, I don't need to say anymore. You already know my thoughts. But can we go around to people who haven't spoke to at least get their two minute? Would that be helpful? I mean.
Yeah, I need, I need to know what I'm doing.
We can do a straw poll.
We've done that before. We did that with the market house. We did, we ran around on the market house to talk about. Yeah, we cannot vote. We, we, you can do, you're, you're not taking an action on a business. This is straw poll.
Okay, Sheila. Uh, yeah, turn.
Yeah, just to address Richard's comments, could, could we have you discuss in-house, though, the best way to do this? Because I'm not convinced an RFP is the best way. We wanna know how much this is gonna cost. And I don't know if we wanna get bought down with technical qualifications. This is a pool, I mean, just very simply, a base bid, replacing kind. I don't know if you're gonna give him the budget to address Sheila's concern. Base bid, replacing kind, add alternate, covered pool, add alternate, what was the other one? I mean, just keep it simple, get the price. Do you, can you help him with a spec, sir? I'm sorry to be rude, but, I mean, you know, just give him a spec and go out to bid. I don't think we need to get, it would be a disaster if we do a RFP.
DPW, DPW can do the specs.
Yes, 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 just, yes.
But they don't know what they want the specs of?
Yeah, you, you, you're talking about a.
Yeah.
A bid build project, I mean.
Is it design-build? Is, you're gonna have them design-bid, design-bid, design-bid-build? Is it design?
No. We're gonna combine the two. Because if we're gonna do a design-bid-build, then we'd have to hire an architect, like.
Okay, so it's design-build, design-bill.
To draw up the plans to replace it in kind with all the specs. That's a.
Want them to do that. They'll do that. They're, they're design-bill contractors for pools.
Right, so I was describing how the design-build process would work.
Right.
Where you do have to get qualifications and then shortlist.
But we gotta get going.
Things are just getting over complicated, I think. I mean, what about, as city manager, you, you had said, you know, we have, what we have budgeted is three point one for a, a season, for a summer seasonal pool. Isn't that all we can really move forward with for the RFP? It can't, I mean, I don't wanna muddy the water with all these other options, I mean.
Ms. Finlayson, and I guess Ross, based on what he's received from the Y, thinks that we can do a pool with a bubble for three point one.
That's not what's in our capital budget, right? I thought we only, what, what was the description with three point one million?
Uh, you'd have to pull that page up.
I thought that was for a.
Well, I don't know if, it, it may say, replace the existing pool, but that, I, I have to look what the description is.
I mean, how does this, normally, when you put out something for a, a bid, this doesn't have to happen, right? I mean, in terms of getting consensus from the council. I'm just trying to figure out how to move forward here. Do we need to introduce a resolution with specific?
The scope of the project? You got the capital project book, Sheila?
It says, replace the current swimming pool and bathhouse with a new modern design that meets all new ADA standards for pool accessibility. That's all it says. And this is our CAP, so we can change it if we need to.
Well, and I would argue you don't even need to.
Well, hopefully not, yeah.
I mean, whether you did indoor or outdoor. I mean, whether you did indoor or outdoor, it would meet that scope.
Right.
The question is, can you do it within 3.1 million?
Okay, so we don't see a consensus here particularly. We can't take a vote on it. I think we're going to leave it to your judgment. Well, I think that I, I, well, I think...
Ruling from the city attorney, you have information about whether or not we can do a straw, a simple straw poll?
Essentially, essentially what the mayor's asking for is to see if there is a consensus. That, that's kind of the same as a straw poll. You're not, because you don't have the ability to have a public, you know, public input and things like that, to take a formal vote at a work session. You know, but we do want to be able to have an opportunity to, to give a consensus of the city council, so the city manager has some idea of how you would like her to proceed. So, if there is a consensus that you all can put together to direct the city manager to move forward, then you can do that.
Have a, do it how? We can't...
I have an idea.
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
Ms. Allen, you already know who supports it and who doesn't, you know, so it was indicated in an email.
Okay, am I allowed to say, Rich, my understanding is Mark doesn't support it, and have Mark confirm that or not confirm that?
You tell me?
Well, I'm not sure that I'm understanding what Mark's comment was.
Well, I was saying from, just general...
I know from an email that, that Rob wants an outdoor seasonal replacement pool. My understanding is Shanika does, Ms. Henson does. My understanding is Mr. Rodriguez does. My understanding is Ms. Tierney does. My understanding is Ms. Pendell-Chaunce does. It, can I ask that to be confirmed? Can I?
Sure, because you're trying to find some ability to be able to move forward in accordance with what the city council would like you to do. If you have every member except for Alderman Rodriguez that supports you moving forward and all, and, but Alderman, while he objects, he can live with you moving forward in the way that the others have decided that they think that you should proceed, then I think that would be sufficient to allow you to proceed.
And I believe the bids will give us the tools to actually make some decisions on, so...
I think the decision is to move forward with an RFP to, to get the market pricing, not whether, what we want.
Alderman Finlayson.
And add alternate for...
What I'm hearing is, and, and I'm not counting votes, but what I'm hearing is that there is an interest in putting out an RFP with all the options, so that we can get pricing for everything, including a bubble.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I know what I need to do.
Okay, great.
Got it.
Oh.
I just want to make sure that that's clear, because that's not, that's not my desire on this. I think that there are a whole host of other causes that, costs that come along, the operational cost of having an indoor facility, having a facility that has a bubble or whatever type of structure that closes it in. I think it is a different pool experience to be in a pool that is enclosed as opposed to an outdoor pool. I think your last statement was, the consensus is that we all do agree to put the bids out or to put out an RFP, including one that has an indoor structure. That is not what I am saying. I'm saying I think we should put one out for an in-kind replacement of an outdoor pool in the existing budget that we have.
Okay, I think it's fair to say, at the present time, we don't have a consensus.
Um, I would, no, I think, so I disagree. Because that's, I, I echo Alderman's comments.
Okay, so, thank you, thank you. I'm going to let you decide what to do there, but you saw... You know the balance, and you've had people report to you. Okay, thank you so much. Let's move on to the next thing. Thank you.
And again, I don't think that I spoke out of turn. I don't think that everybody here could live with a particular way of proceeding to direct the city managers. I, I think that that is a fair... The majority's different than the consensus.
We're not allowed to say that, right? We're not allowed to say that.
The di- the difference is...
So, for the record, my kids were at swim team on Saturday, and we had a great time. Thank you. Okay, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Ooh, the next item on the agenda is Business and Miscellaneous, beginning with ID-234-18, Flood Mitigation Capital Projects.
How you doing?
Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Graco. I'm the project manager for the Stormwater and Flood Mitigation Project at City Dock, and I'm here to provide you an update. Of course, some of the council here is new and haven't been involved or heard about the pro- prop, project for a while. I just want to give a very brief history. First of all, the purpose of the project is to address flooding on Compromised Street and Dock Street and the area surrounding Ego Alley, due only to tidal flooding. The nuisance flooding that we're experiencing rather frequently, this accounts for 95% of the flooding that we have here in downtown. This project will not address flooding due to long-term sea level rise or hurricanes. That would be addressed in totally different projects. We have funding that the city received $1 million from the state for the engineering design of a flood mitigation solution. AECOM, an engineering firm, was hired in February of 2017 to develop three concepts. Initially, what we did was, they developed a matrix of all possible solutions, such as levees, seawalls, backflow preventers, and any, any possible flood mitigation solution. And we determined that there really weren't three unique concepts to go forward with, but one concept that would include multiple solutions. And so that's where we're at. The concept that they proposed, first of all, divides the Ego Alley area, the City Dock area, into two drainage areas. The north area, which is on the Harbor Master side on Dock Street, and then the south drainage area, which is along Compromised Street. The solution that's proposed includes realigning the, most of the existing storm drain system around the City Dock area. We will maintain some of the existing that comes from higher ground, such as Main Street or along Randall Street, and that, those pipes will be just lined to be made watertight. But the remaining system, like, for example, around Susan Campbell Park, there's multiple storm drain inlets that collect the water when it rains, but then it goes directly overboard through a pipe through the bulkhead. All of those outfalls will be eliminated, because that's the source of the flooding. The water's coming up through the pipes and into the storm drains, and then spread out over the street once they get to the surface elevation. We will also require two pump stations, one on each side of Ego Alley. The pump station is comprised of a wet well that this newly redesigned storm drain system will direct the waters to the wet well, at which then, when they hit a certain level, there'll be three pumps proposed. They'll kick on and then pump it over through just one outfall. That outfall will include a backflow preventer to prevent the water coming up through the storm drain as it currently is. And then there's also some grading modifications that will be included. And that means raising the area around the City Dock, but only in very limited spaces. One by the Alex Haley statue, raising the handicap ramp there where it ties into the sidewalk, and also down at the end of Newman Street, where the bulkhead is very low and flush with the street. This will provide a minimum uniform elevation, protection elevation to 3.2. Just without getting into a lot of details, just so you know, the existing seawall that was just built around Ego Alley is at elevation five. So, what I'm saying is, we will have uniform protection through the boardwalk and the existing seawall from the Naval Academy all the way around to Newman Street, or where the Fleet Reserve is. A uniform, the minimum elevation we're protected is to elevation 3.7. So, that, those great grading modifications will, will give us protection to that, which is good. Right now, we're, we're experiencing flooding up through maybe elevation 2.9, so we still have a little bit of leeway there. So, we have this concept design. We went to HPC with that in March of last year, just to present this general concept that, as I've just described for you. We were, we also put in around that time, a grant application to FEMA for $3 million to fund the construction. Since then, we've also received a commitment of $2 million from the state as well towards the construction, and I believe the city would, is slated to put up a million and a half, the remaining million and a half for building one of the pump stations, one, just one side. We've had a very robust community outreach effort to the residents and the business owners around City Dock. We began that in earnest in June of 2017, having meetings with the Ward 1 residents. We convened a meeting of the business owners that have businesses around City Dock. We've presented to the Environmental Commission and, and then some of the PTA members also. Initially, we received a lot of pushback for the proposed pump station on the Harbor Master side. There was concerns about adding an additional building in that area since the current City Dock master plan envisions removal of the Harbor Master building. We were not going to build onto it, it would be a freestanding building, and it would meet the current HPC guidelines by maintaining the existing view shed, but the City Dock master plan envisions opening that view shed up, and, and should we put a building there, that would compromise that, that view. So, we had a lot of pushback there. We didn't hear a lot about the Compromised side of things. There was a pump station initially proposed in the playground area running along the basketball court. We didn't hear anything, and, but in the fall of 2017, at the direction of the previous administration, we were asked to look at reciting it on the plaza side of the basketball court, still running along the fence line. And we did that, and we presented that to the community, and still didn't get a lot of feedback on that, that location, and we were still a lot of focus on the Harbor Master side. So, at that point, in November of 2017, we amended AECOM's contract to now take this concept and take, start developing it towards a final design. And we, again, still continue to reach out to the community and keep them apprised of the, you know, where the project was going and where the design was going. In December of last year, we, a hotel and underground garage development came to light and was, the Public Works was meeting with the developer as well as other departments to hear what the potential plans were, so that we could understand what the impact would be to our project. We feel strongly that we need to continue moving forward, because we're experiencing this flooding on a more frequent basis and with a little bit more intensity, and we expect that to continue to grow with sea level rise. We certainly have taken that into account in the design. There's, there's some capacity built there in the design to make it scalable. For instance, the underground portion of this project, the wet well, is oversized for what's actually needed right now, so that we don't have to go digging a bigger hole in the ground 10 or 20 years from now when sea level rise comes up and floods it even more. So, we had the capacity to either increase the size of the pumps or add an additional pump, that sort of thing. Once the hotel and underground garage surfaced, a decision was made, because it was in the same area that we were looking at behind the Harbor Master, we felt that we didn't want to spend any of the monies that were set aside for design with, if it was potentially going to get, need to be changed because of this development with its uncertain schedule. So, the decision was made to co-locate the two above-ground structures into one structure and site it only on the south side, on the Newman Street. We went back to, we, we presented it to the community, to Ward 1 residents. We got some feedback from them. We took the feedback that we received there and went to HPC with multiple layouts. So, the building basically is comprised of a room that will house the control panels that control the pumps, and there's also a backup generator associated with it. And then they, the consultant developed multiple layouts. We could do a long, narrow building, we could do a square building with the two rooms side by side. We could be L-shaped. And then we also looked at citing it in various locations on the Newman Park parcel, which is the playground, the basketball court, and the plaza area. The, we, initially, it was envisioned that the wet well on this side would be under the basketball court, and the above-ground structure would be in the plaza. People, we heard a lot of comments, concerns about that. The, one of the biggest driving considerations is the existing topography of this parcel. The area in the plaza closest to Compromised Street is low, it's about elevation four. City code requires us to build any new construction, our first floor is to be two feet above what's the base flood elevation or the 100-year storm flood elevation, which is elevation five. So, the first floor would have to be at least at elevation seven. So, building a structure that's now housing electric panels that are seven and a half feet tall themselves, and they're required to be no lower than elevation eight, because city code requires electrical equipment to be three feet above this 100-year storm elevation, makes for a very large building. Site, so, site it in the plaza, it would be about a two-story building, almost as large as the, what's currently being built at 110 Compromised or the old Fawcett's property. So, we, we also looked at putting it in the playground, which was undesirable to a lot of residents because of lack of the, you know, using up the playground space, and it's a much-needed amenity. We heard from many residents that they didn't want to give up. However, the ground there is at a much higher elevation. It's already at elevation eight, which would mean this building could be a slab-on-grade and would be the shortest building. The footprint does not change, we, we know the space we need to house the generator and the control panels. So, we've kind of had this back and forth going with the design. It's constantly evolving as we receive feedback from the community and from HPC. We also had a meeting with school officials who indicated that they really didn't feel that they could afford to give up the playground or basketball court even during construction, and requested that we site it in the plaza, leaving the recreational facilities untouched, so that they would have access to it through the school year. The estimated construction time right now is 15 to 18 months. This includes some potential archaeology, which we know we're, we, we fully expect to encounter. So, based on that, that meeting with the school officials, that was our last outreach meeting, and that was held on May the 4th. So, based on that, we decided that our final design would be cited in the plaza area, both the above-ground structure and the wet well, to try to honor their request to leave the recreational facilities available. We most recently went to HPC for the third time with this layout, and was, it was not well-received at all. They indicated that they would not approve that building. It's a very large building, two stories. It impacts the view shed along Compromised Street, a gateway to the city. In addition, as the design has progressed, we're, we had met with BG&E to understand the electrical loadings, and a large transformer will be required in addition, which will have to be cited nearby and up above the flood elevation, again, another large structure that's not very appealing. And so, after meeting with the HPC, they indicated that they really had great difficulty... And so after meeting with the HPC, they indicated that they really had great difficulty, would have difficulty approving something in the plaza area of that magnitude. We had a coordination conference, teleconference with our consultant just this past Tuesday. And we feel that at this point, in order to move this project forward, that we're going to drop back to the original concept of keeping the two pump stations separate, not trying to co-locate them, to continue moving forward on the south side, but dropping back to the smaller structure to meet the needs of only the south side since the Harbor Master side is still very much in flux, that area with the hotel discussion or it's, you know, it's on hold. We just don't know what's going to happen. So right now, we have the funding. Well, in addition, I apologize, we applied for a FEMA grant for the $3 million. We still have not heard on that whether we've received it. So we know we still have at least another six to eight months of design. And then our construction will be 15 to 18 months. So we're focusing on the south side or just putting the north side pump station on hold until that area settles out. Perhaps a development, the hotel or another development in that area, maybe we'll be able to combine with them at that time when the north station needs to be designed. So going forward, right now, we're looking at dropping back to just the single pump station to address flooding on the Compromise Street side. We're also looking into what the city's legal responsibility is to provide that playground. There was a thought that perhaps in the deed, that there was a requirement that that playground had to be maintained. Right now, we have not found that information. It's there, it's not part of the deed. It's there for the children, but we are not required. So we're, I guess we're going to have ongoing discussions with the school officials and trying to find a solution to that problem.
Can you give us the dimensions of the reduced, the original plan? What were the dimensions?
The original building for just the south side was 13 feet wide by 45 feet long.
That's the reduced one?
That would be the reduced one, yes.
And how high?
If it were in the back, in the playground, the building itself would be, I think we need a minimum of 12 feet, eight inches just to house the electrical equipment. That portion of the building will have a roof on it. The generator does not need, it can be open air and so that doesn't anticipate a roof. But it'll just be, the current rendering, what we envision architecturally would be that it would be similar to the dumpster enclosure that was recently built on the school property, the Annapolis Elementary School. So it's just a utilitarian structure, you know, brick, running bond brick and I don't know all the proper details, but it's just a flat roof structure, no, no.
And what are the dimensions of that trash room right now?
Oh, well, that is actually 12 feet, eight inches tall. So it would be the same height as that. I don't, it's, I don't know the length and the width of it.
So we're talking 40 by 13 by 12 foot high. So that is with the original, 13 with the original plan?
Yes. Pardon me?
How big is this generator?
The generator, so the generator would be a natural gas generator that would be, you know, hard piped in. It would be for this side because it's a larger drainage area. The total drainage area around City Dock is 90 acres. This side would address 26 acres of drainage coming directly to the pump station. In contrast, on the Harbor Master side, it's only six acres. But it would require a 250 K kilowatt generator. Just for comparison, the one that's behind the city hall right now, that's 200 kilowatts. So it's just a little, it would be larger than that.
Aldwin Tierney first.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, Lisa.
You're welcome.
I just, just for clarification, because I've attended as many meetings as possible and in the interest of good relations, et cetera, I would say in fairness to HPC, this last meeting where they rejected it, from their perspective, they had seen previously a location that was acceptable to them, pending, looking at it in a rendering. And that's what they expected the last meeting was this, where it was located wedged in, if you will, and then shifted rectangular. So I just don't want it to be on record that this, you became at, you know, at a stop point because of HPC. That's not the case.
No.
They wanted to look at the rendering of what they had somewhat approved.
Kind of approved.
Yes. The previous April. So my question is, is in dealing with, and thank you for letting me clarify that, what is the viability of anything of a pump house on the north side? You said, did it get, when it was placed behind the Harbor Master? What was, did HPC look at that?
Yes, they were shown that. Now, that building, it was proposed as a square building, 24 feet by 24 feet wide and probably it would be about 13 feet tall as well. I think it had a little bit more, it wasn't totally flat top, but it tied into the architecture of the existing Harbor Master building, but it was freestanding behind it. It would be located in that plaza area and there's some nozzing parking directly behind the Harbor Master building. That's where the pump, the above-ground structure was proposed. The below-grade wet well would be in the drive aisle adjacent to that. That's where it was proposed originally.
So that was approved by HPC, but then with the potential development of a hotel, it was, let's wait and see what's going to happen there and shift and co-locate to the south side. And then it became 30% bigger.
Correct.
So that's where we sort of are today. And then you met just recently saying, let's get that smaller. Let's have two separate pump house locations now. So we're still proceeding, I guess independently of whatever will happen. Has there been any discussion where a hotel development would be advantageous? Would a hotel incorporate a pump house of any size? Is that a viable option that needs to be out there so there's not all these different conversations happening?
Sure. So the developer of the proposed hotel has offered to provide space within his development to house the pump station and the generator. We've provided him sizes, you know, that would be, square footage that would be required as well as elevations that it would need to be at and the cost that we were given by our consultants. So they have that information. The offer is out there. Whether that hotel development goes through or some other development, there is always that possibility of teaming up. We had a similar situation when the bulkhead was put in, we had to add additional control panels for the upgraded boat facilities that we provided, the power pedestals. There's five slips along the Donner lot. And that increase in the electrical panels created an issue of where to house, where to put it. It was originally designed, we only got approved to have it on an outdoor platform. It sat in the Donner lot for 18 months. At the time that we were trying to get a building approved to house that, which did not get approved by HPC, the developers of 110 Compromise Street offered to take that structure into their building once they did their renovation. And that is what has happened. They built an electrical room within their new building. It's completely dedicated to the city's equipment. They moved the equipment in. There's just one exterior door. There's no access to this room from their interior and that the city has sole access to it and it houses these electric control panels. So we envision there's the potential there for a similar partnering with a developer to get the, this above-ground structure into some future development. I mean, that possibility would certainly exist if they were willing to do that.
Just, and could I also ask, when you talk about, and I'm talking about the north side again, when you talk about realigning the storm water and eliminating the outfalls and doing the regrading, et cetera, how much of a disruption is that to City Dock? How much of would be, I mean, you ripping it up or is it?
Well, so all of the existing storm drains run around the perimeter of Susan Campbell Park. There's 10 in Susan Campbell Park alone, going from the Sailing Hall of Fame around along Ego Alley. And then there are three in the Dock Street parking lot along the waterfront and a couple along the curb side where the businesses are. So yes, all of that would have to be dug up. The wet well in itself, it's 30 feet deep. It's a very large pit. So yes, a lot of the City Dock area would be dug up in renovation. Likewise, on the Compromise Street side of things, not only do you have this large pit and an above-ground structure, the realignment of the storm drain system all along Compromise Street. So we will have a trench that runs all along the curb line. The existing storm drain runs along the curb line on the waterfront, water side of Compromise Street. So that will all be dug up as part of this project.
Let me ask, I'm sorry, I'm hoarding time here, but this was asked, I think at the HPC meeting, on the relocation on the south side, if it, if it moves back to, how long will the playground be offline? That's the issue, right? With the PTA and the school, I guess, is the objection?
Yes.
They're going to get it back in kind. I've used that word a lot today. But they won't have a playground for X amount of time.
Correct.
Even though if we don't do this, they won't be able to get to the playground.
Correct. So the original timeline, we estimate about 15 to 18 months of construction. In discussions with the consultant, if the city were willing to purchase the long lead items such as the generator and I think some of the piping, I believe, there was two big items. If we were willing to purchase that directly, we could shorten the construction period because we could, we could purchase that before a contractor was even hired to do the work so that, you know, that 15 to 18 months included the lead time it would take from a contractor placing in order to get these long lead time items. So it could shorten the construction period to as short as 12 months. That was one thing that we recently discussed with the consultant to address that. But if we were to build the above-ground structure in the playground, we would, we could, I think we're kind of committed to putting the wet well in the plaza area and keep the, we could keep the basketball court open then at that point. But you have to understand, there's going to be conduits then that are going to tie between the building and the wet well. So really, the whole parcel's going to get dug up. And then you've got the outfall pipes, the discharge pipes that go from the wet well down Newman Street and through the bulkhead. So that whole area will be dug up. And we had tried to say, you know, we would try to work with the community if we were in the playground area to retain the total square footage. We could totally redesign the whole parcel, maybe taking some of the lost square footage in the playground from the plaza area, reducing the size of the plaza. We could either maintain the basketball court or, one of the layouts that we had proposed was rotating the basketball court 90 degrees so that it ran parallel to Newman Street and making it regulation size. We could do that. So there's a lot of ways that this area could be re-envisioned. We hope that would be, help create a little appeal to the community that something would come up of it once it was completed.
Aldwin Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Lisa, for the information. I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. So the south side, the original plan, so it's the location, it's kind of on the edge of the, in between the playground and the basketball court?
So on the south side, the very original concept was have the wet well under the basketball court. And the very original building was actually in the playground, but along the fence line with the basketball court. As a matter of fact, we had proposed some amenities like courtside bleachers with a little awning over it, again, to make it a little bit more appealing. There was some concern. Even though we did not hear any comments back about that location from the community, the previous administration had requested that we look at reciting it just on the other, on the plaza side of the basketball court, again, running along the fence line and providing the courtside amenities. So that was the second iteration on the south side. Then the decision was made to get out of the way of any potential development on the north side and to co-locate the two above-ground structures on the south side. So the footprint of the building grew by 30%. And at that point then, we had multiple layouts in the plaza.
No, just, you know, I understand that, but where's the current? I thought you said you were going back to.
So the current, so the most recent presentation, so we had A through H layouts in the plaza and further developed two additional layouts in the playground. One in the back corner, the highest corner, closest to the parking lot. And one which would be along, again, a long, rectangular shaped building that ran, was run along the parking lot, right behind their dumpster enclosure and would run the, redo the basketball court parallel to Newman Street. That was the other playground alternative.
Is that what you're doing?
And those two in the playground were the preferred HPC solution after the second meeting with them. The first one just presented the general concept of pump stations, wet wells and realignment. The second meeting showed all of these layouts. They said, bring them to us, let us help you vet some of this because you're getting so many conflicting inputs from the community.
Which one are you going forward with?
So to the third meeting, the most recent meeting, we had it in the plaza, but now it was perpendicular to the fence, the basketball court fence, running along the parking lot, the school parking lot. And that then brought the building very close to the sidewalk. So now you have a two-story structure adjacent to the sidewalk along Compromise Street. And then the transformer was closer to the basketball court, was not accepted by HPC. They said, we need to rethink that. So now, I mean, it's just, that was just last week. So again, discussions with the consultant, we said, we need to drop back to the original, we need to reduce our footprint for one and we need to, so we're going to do that. And then we're going to look at two sites, one in the plaza still and one in the back corner of the playground. One recommendation by HPC would be in, one way to reduce what they call the massing, this bulk of this building would be to separate it into the two smaller rooms that they are. One would be, and so that would be what we're looking at now. So two smaller buildings in the plaza and one in the, one single building in the back playground, but reduced to the original footprint that was proposed for the south side only.
Okay, so that's what you're moving forward with?
That's what we're planning, moving forward with.
Two smaller buildings, okay. One near the basketball court, the other in the back corner. Okay, so are you taking that back to the HPC or you already have?
So the plan is, I mean, this was just decided this Tuesday of this week. The plan is we will develop these and get on the schedule in September. They don't meet in August. They have a meeting on the 26th of this month. It would be too soon.
And so that means both north and the south have their own control?
Yes.
Stations, their own electronics and their own?
But we're only going to move forward with the south side design at this time.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, and and in terms of, so what's the state of the, you had, I believe if I recall correctly, the funding is in place for the south station?
Not totally. So we have a grant application into FEMA for $3 million. That was submitted last April. We still have not heard whether we've been awarded. We've had, the first feedback we got was in the fall. We were working initially with MEMA. They vet it and made some comments. We addressed their comments. It only has been reviewed once by FEMA at the beginning of this year. But we have not heard anything definitively whether we're getting the $3 million or not. We do have a commitment from the state. There's a $2 million line item in the governor's budget. And we, I believe, anticipate a $1.5 million commitment from the city.
Do we have that budget, the $1.5 million?
I believe we do.
So you're waiting on FEMA. And then the north, I believe there was some funding. And then, the north, I believe there was some funding?
No, I mean, we priced up the two separately. It was four million dollars for the north side, the Harbor Master side, and six-point-five to construct the south side. So, we're focusing on the south side right now.
But I thought, I remember that one of the documents I saw did have some funding already set aside for the north.
I believe the FEMA application was originally applied for, based on the north side being built first. But because of the negative comments we got back about building a structure in that area, and the hotel development, those two things, we decided to set aside the north side for now. Well, at that time, it was decided to co-locate on the south side. But we're focusing on the south side.
But I thought there was other funding listed, if I remember.
Not that I'm aware of.
City funding or state for the north, just for the south? Okay. Is there, so, and the HPC was okay with locating it behind the Harbor Masters Building?
It met all the existing guidelines, yes. We met their guidelines in terms of keeping the view shed. We had a view shed, you know, the architect, is a local architect, Ed Masick. He's very familiar with what the HPC guidelines are. He met all the criteria. So, yes, it did meet their criteria on that side. But it was the community that did not want it to be built there because of the city dock master plan.
Is there a plan to remove the Harbor Master Building?
That is part, what the vision of the city dock master plan, and I believe that's part, has been part of the discussion of the potential hotel development, was, again, taking, not only the pump station into their development, but the Harbor Master operations.
When was that building constructed, the Harbor Master Building?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay, so, but there's no set plan to remove that right now?
No.
Is there, so, when is the hotel gonna get built?
The hotel? I, my understanding is, there hasn't even been legislation to change the zoning, which is a first step, so...
So, okay, so, we don't even know. So, how long do you think this might get delayed, the north pump?
For the north pump?
Yeah.
Well, it was never envisioned to be built at the same time. We didn't have the funding for construction for it. It was always envisioned to be built in two separate phases, a north side and a south side. Originally, we had thought we would be building the north side, but for the reasons I've mentioned, we abandoned that. We just flipped the, you know, the order of the construction. So, we're going forward with the design on the south only at this time.
Okay.
Let me just add, we had a million dollars from the state for design. We de-scoped, we took the north side out of the consultant's scope altogether. So, we got a reduction in their design fee, because that scope has been removed at this time. We're not looking at it, we're not doing anything with it, because there's too much influx on that side of Ego Alley.
So, if there wasn't the hotel, you wouldn't be constructing these at the same time anymore?
Correct. We would've designed both at the same time for the one million dollars. And then, we, but we only had, we still don't have all the construction money, but we didn't feel we could get the full ten million, so it would've been, plus, it would've been too disruptive. I mean, the entire downtown would be torn up.
Well, when, so, if you do them separately, when would you construct? Would you just do one after another, north and the south?
Well, I think until we really have a clear idea of any development that's gonna take place on the north side.
From the hotel, ignoring the hotel, you would just do them one after another, presumably?
Well, it wouldn't, it's not even designed the north side. We were not even putting any effort towards designing it.
If there was no hotel, you would be designing both at the same time. You'd presumably be trying to get funding for both at the same time.
Yes, I assume we would work on it.
I'm trying to get my handle on how much of a delay we are facing with this hotel, which may or may not happen. I get you have a lot of good ideas with it, but I'm really worried that we're delaying this really necessary and long-overdue flood mitigation downtown for something that may never happen. We have these concrete problems we need to address now with these pumps. And I really don't like the idea. And plus, I think it makes it more difficult, again, in terms of getting the grant funding, if we have these two separate projects, and don't even know what's gonna happen with the north side. I mean, so, overall, what's gonna happen? If you only have the south side constructed, say, we finished that, and you have to wait another three, four years to get the north constructed, what's gonna be the implication downtown in terms of flooding? I mean, I guess the north side is still gonna experience flooding?
It could, unless something was done on a temporary basis, perhaps. We do have, like, backflow preventers. People, a lot of people ask, "Why aren't you just putting backflow preventers in all the outfall pipes that would take care of the problem? Because isn't that, the water's coming up through the pipe?" The sole reason that we need a pump station is because if we were to have a high-tide event, but we had backflow preventers in, and we got a severe rainstorm at the same time, we would have worse flooding than we experienced from the high tide. Because it would not be able to be, flow out by gravity through the pipes.
They're also very expensive for my colleague. I mean, backflow preventers cost between ten thousand to thirty thousand, depending on the pipe size. And so, you're talking, you have a lot of pipes down there, probably about a dozen. That's a large chunk of change that's not really, we're talking about a temporary measure until the hotel's done, that's an expensive temporary measure. So, I, I mean, I'm in favor of just...
I'm not sure, we really haven't discussed what we would do in the interim.
Well, I mean, I'm really in favor of moving forward and treating them separately. You can talk about the hotel separately, but I really think we need to get this stuff, the pumps done.
Alderman Onad?
Thank you. So, I take it from this discussion that you can separate it? That, I mean, water goes to the lowest level. So, if we pump away on the south side, won't the water from the north side come over? I mean, I'm assuming that you can segment these two problems.
Well, right now, you have to understand, we're not getting water coming over the wall. It's, you know, just coming through the pipes. So, as I said, we're protected, we'll be protected to, even doing nothing on the north side, the water will not come over any structures. It will, it can still come through the structures on the north side. So, yes, that will flood, but as we see today, like, the water that comes up in Dock Street is still contained in that parking area. It's not like it's gonna flow around Randall Street and then down Compromised, so...
Okay.
It's truly separated right now.
So, it's, I mean, I know this is information only, and I don't know, like, do we even have a council decision point in any of this, other than what's in the CIP?
This was just to give you an update, as requested, of where we are.
It's hard for me, first of all, it's hard for me to envision a thirteen-foot-wide, forty-five-foot-long building, and it's hard to understand, thinking about the generators here, and even with control panels, why you would need forty-five feet. But it's also hard to understand, whatever the size of the building is, what they're gonna look like. Are these like the old CMP telephone houses that were built to look like they were a neighborhood house? But they don't have real windows, they're fake windows, or something like that?
No, we don't, there would be no windows on it. We would use the facades for public art, for green, you know, landscape, backdrop for landscaping. You know, there's a variety of...
I mean, it's gonna be pretty monolithic buildings.
Yes. Well, HPC, let me just add that HPC requirements require you to draw on the context of your surrounding buildings. So, we will be looking to the new garage that's being, that is built for the new condominiums that were at the old rec center at nine St. Mary's Street. A new data point will be the new faucets built, you know, one-ten Compromised. We will be looking to, the architect will use, have to draw from them as data points for context. And then, we have the existing dumpster enclosure. That's currently what the renderings use as context.
So, have you checked with the Y of Central Maryland to see if they can do it?
No, now we're getting silly.
Alderman Tierney?
Thank you. My colleague, Alderman Savage and I sit on the same committee, the Environmental Committee. And I think I can speak for Rob as well, is that we were concerned about the big picture. And I think we got some confirmation yesterday from Dan, who's, I don't know if my other colleagues know who Dan Nies is, but, he, go ahead.
Dan's with the University of Maryland, I think it's School of Public Policy. But through a grant that the University of Maryland has gotten, they are studying, you know, an inventory of all the assets of Annapolis, and what we need to do, where we are and where we wanna be, you know, to protect our assets and resilience. And then, we gotta figure out how to get from here to here, but...
So, that, and that was my first question to him last night, was, "Do you know about this project? And are we using city assets the best way?" Because we have limited, we have limited city property at city dock. And, I mean, even more so now because of property being bought up. So, are we placing these in the most optimal place? And so, yeah, I strongly believe and agree with my colleague, Rob, that we should be opening up the north side in the discussion, and looking at this thing holistically as a whole, and saying, "Is this gonna work?" Sounds like you've decided, you know, I don't wanna get into what you discussed, I guess, last Tuesday, but you decided the best way, regardless of what happens on the north side, is that we're gonna split it up. Okay, so, we split it up, and we addressed the south side. I wasn't here, but I have heard a lot about the playground parking garage five years ago, and it was never built because of the playground and all of that stuff. And my fear is that this project on the south side is not gonna go anywhere because of the word "playground" in it. I mean, I'm just being a realist here. Unless we have full support from the administration, that they're gonna help you get this thing built, and help you communicate that they're gonna be disrupted for a year, but they're gonna get their playground back. I'm not convinced that that is, you know, that's our MO. But from attending every meeting possible, I see that's where the tipping point is. Because last April, everything was really okay with its sized, incorporating a bigger pump house. The generator was not as big, I guess, that can go back down to what it was.
Correct. It was, one-fifty's required on the north, two-fifty on the south. When it was combined, it jumped up to seven-hundred-and-thirty kW. It's very large.
So, we'll get back to the, so, you have standalone...
Go back to the two, yes.
So, you basically have standalone pump stations that service those areas. But, so, and in that April meeting, what was successful about it was that Ward One was within the audience, and it was a work session, it was HPC, and they said, "This looks good, but we're gonna need to look at an elevation." And then, subsequent to that, there was a P, so, you had direction. And ACOM was gonna just, "Okay, we've got it sited, perhaps, and we're gonna pretty it up and see what it looks like." We still haven't seen that, but hopefully, fingers crossed, it's gonna be. Because seriously, you know that's the album Asbury Park? You know the front cover of Asbury Park, the railroad car? That's what that building looked like. All it needed to say was "Welcome to," all right, I'm getting silly here, but that's what it looked like. It was just a big box car on the side, near the sidewalk, no offense, but it was big. So, so, they have to site it back. The question is, yeah, so, what happened was Ward One, and HPC were happy with that, but when it was the school, and the PTA looked at it, there was this outrage. I don't know how you're gonna surpass, you know what I'm saying?
Correct.
So, you've got to, need help.
We were trying to do our due diligence and, you know, do outreach to all the various stakeholders, get input. I mean, even part of the design, we heard from one community, they really, end-users, "We want restrooms there, you know, we have to take our kids to puffer." So, we actually incorporated that in the design. But then, you know, you get to the next meeting, and the people are like, "We don't want restrooms." It brings another whole host of problems. So, in trying to take into account all these various priorities, the project has been not gaining any traction. We're, we got it a stalemate. So, we felt like we needed to drop back, we definitely need to downsize to the original size. And we're, as I said, we're doing research into what are the legal requirements to keep the playground open. While we'd like to, you know, accommodate the school officials and their recreational facilities, we do have a legal requirement to meet HPC. They're the regulatory body that has to approve this. We have to get it approved. If we can't get it approved by them in the plaza area, then we're gonna have to come up with another solution, and that's where we're at. We're trying to drop back, downsize, and just meet the needs of the south side at this point.
Theresa, can I ask you? If we, we've got two million dollars promised from the state. We have, we're trying to get a three-million-dollar FEMA grant. If we procrastinate, do we jeopardize that money in any way?
Depends how long you procrastinate for.
I can answer that. So, the grant, the grant from FEMA typically, you're required to complete your construction within three years, although you can get waivers, but you don't go into it with that idea that you're gonna get a waiver. So, we're working diligently to keep the process moving. I believe with the grant from the, the bond bill from the state, you have a little bit more time with that. That was my experience when we took some money for the market house back in 2012. We had a little bit longer period.
And how much of the one million dollars have we spent on design so far?
We have spent, so, we spent a hundred-and-twenty-six thousand on the original concept. We only awarded them that much of their fee, of the total one million, to come up with this concept. And since then, we've been built, we've paid two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars. But that also includes, it's not so much design, there was a huge data collection effort that that covers. They've done a whole archaeology report that was very well-received by the HPC and the Maryland Historic Trust. They've done bathymetry, which is the depth, water depth in Ego Alley. We've had geotechnical surveys done, soil boring, so we can understand what the soil layers are, and how, it will inform the design of the buildings and the wet well. And we've had topographic survey done as well.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, and you may have said this, but the school has two playgrounds, right? One is their little playground that's adjacent to the parking lot, and then it's our playground.
That's probably for the kindergartner, I believe it's like an age-related thing. That's probably for the younger children only. And then, the playground is for the elementary school.
Then, our playground, and then, don't they have one in the front of the building? Was there another playground there?
My kids go to school there, no.
Okay, when they named the Rachel and Philip Brown Building, they were supposed to be putting a, that's the old Board of Ed portion of the building. They were supposed to be putting a playground there, so they never, there's no playground on that side of the building?
I don't see anything there in the front, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
Nothing there, I mean, some benches and stuff, yeah.
Okay, so, they use our playground for their upper grades, period?
Yes, yes. And we're researching, we're trying to determine, does the city have like a memorandum of understanding that gives them exclusive use? There is a plaque that currently on the playground that says it's for the use of the schoolchildren, I think, Monday through Friday, eight to four. But whether there's some legal document that, you know, guarantees that, or whether that was just something that was put in place, I've heard a lot. I wasn't here when it was built, but there was two thousand volunteers. It was quite an effort to raise the funds and build and construct the playground, so...
But it's not closed to the public during school hours?
Yeah, according to the sign on the playground, it is. It's not supposed to be used Monday through Friday, eight to four. It's for schoolchildren only.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I quit.
So, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. City Turney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The agenda has been completed.
Okay, anything else for good order? Do I have a motion? Where's Fred?
I have something for the good order, I have something for the good order. I asked Ron to this earlier. I just thought this would be a cool idea after break, is if we could have, um, and I can arrange it, there's a bowling alley on Old General's Highway, and, and I thought it'd be really cool if we started bowling, um, alternating between the police department and the fire department.
I like that.
Chief Stokes liked it. He said, well, I won't tell you what he said. So I would just have to find out like a night, a night we could do that. Isn't, I mean, just random. I thought it'd be hilarious.
That'd be great.
We could have shirts made. No, huh? Bowling!
And it's a cool bowling alley. They have lights, I've taken students there.
Yeah.
And they have lights and disco, you know, you don't feel like you're in a bowling alley.
Okay, yeah. Oh, will you go home?
All right, okay, let's take a vote.
Who has a poll?
All those in favor?
My dad has.
Aye, opposed? Okay, eyes have it. Meeting adjourned, thank you.